I'd like to call to order this Finance Committee meeting. It's Friday, October 10th, 2025. And it's my mind says 10:01. I'm sorry, it's not 10. I'd like to get an approval of the agenda. Or sorry, I need a roll call first. And some of you online and some are in the room, so bear with me as I get through this. Your roll call?
Here.
Peter Schaefer?
Roger Cuddy.
Here.
Joanna Roche?
Martin McCarroll.
Martin McCarroll.
Jeremy Blumberg.
And online we have Joe Wright?
Here.
And Anthony Gutamond.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can we get an approval of the agenda?
Well, moved.
You. On the approval? Hi, Peter, Rob, Joanna, Martin, Jeremy?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Jill, I'm going to, I'm going to open this up for public comment.
Not on the agenda. No public comment for anything not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. Thank you.
Nantucket Finance Committee meeting, October 10th, 2025.
And I'm going to close the public comment. Okay. It's very unusual that we're here at a 10 o'clock on Friday. And I actually want to apologize to the public that we had to do it this way, but we are on a timeline. We really like to meet in the evenings because we like people who work to be here. And and I'm very sorry that we cannot meet that time. It's important today that we try to work on our motions and work through this so that we can get to the printer because there is some pressure there so that the voters can get a copy of the warrant in town meeting with our town code policies. So with that, do I need to take a roll call in public hearing?
I think you just have to, I asked John. I know.
John, do I need to do a roll call for public hearing to open it?
No, you already did the roll call to open the meeting.
All right. So with that, what I'm going to recommend is that the proponent of Article One contacted me and he is not able to be here. Actually, he does, he has to work. And so I think Penny Dye is here to talk about Article One as his representative. And so I would like to open up. I'd like to open it up so that we talked about Article One first because that's what appears first in the warrant and that is the person who called this special town meeting. As an aside, I think this is the, I know it's the only citizens called special town meeting since I've been on the board. I asked her to look into it. She couldn't find one either for the last 17 years. So it is an unusual fairly unprecedented event for our form of government. So if Penny wants to speak her verse and anybody else obviously can speak after that. But I'd like, what I'm letting the board know is I'd like to talk about Article One and then make our motion. And then I want to talk about Article Two. Yeah.
Some, some of my comments have to do with both articles and and the differences. Is that all right to?
Yeah. Oh, no, okay. I mean, we're not trying to.
Perfect. I just think they're so connected. Okay, so I'm Penny Dye. I'm in favor of the citizens article. I'm one of some 400 people that are supporting this that we know about at this point. 350 of them signed the petition to call for the special town meeting. So Brian Borgeson, who's the actual sponsor, could not be here today because he's working. He's a charter captain, fishing captain, and his season does not end on some arbitrary day like August 31st. It ends when the fish and the tourists are gone. Article One is simple. It codifies all rentals into our zoning bylaw, subject to existing and future regulations. Regulations that are already in place include no corporate rentals, local registration, compliance with safety, noise, and parking rules, occupancy limits, and a 24/7 hotline for complaints. This hotline received only five calls this year, two, two of which were to verify whether or not a property was in fact a short-term rental. As we know, Nantucket has a long tradition of housing vacationers in private homes. It uses residential and it is a property right. Vacationers socialize, cook, sleep, and do the same activities as an owner does when they're in residence. In 1995, there were 60 hotels and inns on this island. Today, there are 33. With fewer than 800 hotel rooms, people are going to stay in private homes. Over 93% of the people who rent on Nantucket during the season come for less than 32 days. Today, they simply cannot afford to come for longer. According to the town assessor, there are 12,700 homes in Nantucket. Only 11% of these are rented on a short-term basis. That's according also to the town. It's not possible, just simply not possible that 11% of all the homes on this island are the cause of all the challenges facing Nantucket. We've been building more than 100 new homes every year, which require many more services than before. And those of us that live here know that there's a traffic problem on Old South Road in March. Service truck after service truck, which is not from short-term rentals. Article One satisfies the objections of Judge Fay and stops the privately funded lawsuits that have been pitting neighbor against neighbor. It also gives the community some security to know what is happening in the near future. If someone doesn't like what town meeting does, they cannot sue it. Article Two, put forward by the Chair of the Planning Board and endorsed by the Political Action Committee Act now, limits the ability to rent to 49 days during what they have defined as high season, which is June 15th to August 31st. It further only allows an additional 21 days of short-term rentals in the rest of the year, which would crush the shoulder season economy. The summer season in reality is more like 12 to 15 weeks, not 10 weeks. This would mean, if Article Two were to pass, it would mean an over 40% reduction in visitor accommodations. As we heard last night at the planning board, this matters because it impacts everyone here whose business depends upon vacationers. This is not just about the lost revenue to the town, but about the economic multiplier effect throughout our community. The room occupancy tax has generated nearly $50 million for this town, paid by guests, not by taxpayers. Sponsored Article Two has also stated that it will not reduce traffic or make real estate more affordable, that it will give voters a choice. A choice based upon what? No economic studies, no enforcement plans, and it is an article being dictated by those who do not have to work for a living. They have been calling it the compromise article, when in fact it is the capitulation article. Article Two is economic discrimination against those who work here and those who can only afford to come here for less than 32 days. We urge you to support Article One. It is reckless not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have questions for Penny? She is here as substitute for the article proponent. We're going to continue to hear from other people, but I think now is a good time to see if she has any questions. If you have any questions for her. I know that we have discussed, what do you know, why in the use chart here? For a long time. So this has been, we've looked at a lot of articles over the years. And this is similar to a large, like things we discussed in the.
Article 66, the most recent one that had the why in the use chart was actually endorsed, I believe unanimously by the planning board in May, five months ago.
The difference with this too is that you have you included long-term leases in there? And do you want to elaborate on that?
Certainly. If one uses the logic, the Judge Fay logic, that short-term rentals are an illegal use in a particular zoning district, which in the case of the Ward lawsuit is the residential old historic. If that's an illegal use because they're not in the zoning bylaw, that kind of logic extrapolated out would would tend to believe one to believe that all rentals are an illegal use because they're not specifically in our zoning bylaw. Our zoning bylaw is permissive. Has to be in there if it's allowed.
Do you have any question?
I do, because I think I heard John talk about this yesterday at the planning board. Right, the, what the long-term lease piece, and maybe I think he should maybe clarify that for our group.
Okay. John, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, did you hear what Joanna asked?
Joanna, you're asking me to clarify.
Share with this group what you shared about long-term leases yesterday at the planning board hearing.
So I think the question was, why was long-term leases defined the way it was in the, in Article Two? I'm sorry, in Article One, excuse me. And it is essentially the rental or leasing of any residential dwelling unit or portion thereof in exchange for compensation. So how does that dovetail with the definition of short-term rental? So anything that is not a short-term rental but involves the rental or leasing of residential dwelling units is considered a long-term lease. Sufficient?
There was a study done by the planning department in 2021, and they looked at all the noise complaints that came in that year through the police department. And 97% of those noise complaints were for either owner occupied or those that were occupied on a long-term basis, not a short-term basis. If we're going to regulate rentals, they need to be in the zoning bylaw.
So that's the logic behind getting long-term leases in here because I guess the question really is, I'm not sure long-term leases are, are, this is a double negative, are not just a by right use of anyone's property.
Yeah, if I, I can just elaborate on that, Joanna. So I think it's, it's fair to say that the generally accepted view in zoning is that a residential use does not require that that the occupant own the property. It can also be a rental. That is the traditional understanding and I would say definition of you know, a residential use. And so to, I, I believe the petitioners felt it was important to restore the language to the bylaw that was discussed in Judge Fay's decision in Ward Two and to make it expressly clear, if you will, that a, both a, well, first of all, a long-term lease is a residential use. As is a short-term rental, that is a principal use. So they're both principal uses. And that's essentially what this article does. We can, we can, we don't know exactly what the outcome of the appeal will be. As you know, we filed an appeal in the Ward case. We'll see what the appeals court has to say about this. But I believe the proponents, and I don't mean to speak for them, basically want to just restore what everybody understood was allowed in Nantucket prior to the 2015 town meeting where that use language and rental language was struck.
That is correct.
Thank you. Anybody online? Joe or Anthony?
You reviewed it, Anthony.
Okay.
Questions at this time? Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we'll go to questions from other people or comments to public statements. Brian Sullivan, he's online.
Sorry, I just want to note my support of Article One because it will not effectively change the economy or the tax base or the overall you know, cash flow and GDP of the island at this time, whereas Article Two will have significant consequences that are yet unknown. I think it's easily identifiable in any restriction of number of days if we look back to Christmas stroll of last year, where one day of a power outage significantly impacted a number of businesses, so much so we needed to seek grant funds to keep them afloat. And that was just one business day. So it has, it has less to do about rentals and more about our greater economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Barrett, she asked her hand up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to point, I follow the revenue generation from the short-term rental. And I, I think the finance director might be speaking to it, but I just, in response to Article One where there are people who are worried about floodgates opening and so forth. The, the market, I think, for short-term rentals is, is market-driven. So it goes up and down with demand and so forth. But I think that it's, it's useful to notice, note for a financial committee like yourselves is that the guardrails, if you will, the, the regulations that Penny mentioned that are already in place and have been in place for a little over a year or two now, or actually more than that, are resulting in the revenues dropping from 2023 fiscal year to 2024. The revenues for coming to the town dropped by 9%. And then for fiscal year 25, they're still lower than they were in 2023. So what this could indicate is if, if you would expect the amount of rentals to be the same, let's say they're the same number of STRs or they're a higher, higher number, you would expect that the prices in the past two years for renting a room would go up. And so even if there wasn't any more rentals and they were stayed constant, the number of days rented in a year, you would expect the revenues to rise just because the price to rent on a given night is higher than it was two years ago. But these numbers are going the opposite way. And I think that may be reflecting the fact that the corporate rentals are no longer allowed, the real estate investment trusts are no, are no longer allowed. And so the, the market is settling back down and heading down and or leveling out in any case. And so the preserving the status quo, which is what Article One would do, is, is let the market move the way it, it, it will. And, and right now it looks like those guardrails in place are working. They're doing something to, to dampen the, the growth already. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Schaefer here in Naran.
Yeah, Peter Schaefer speaking as a resident of Nantucket. Two things. Once, we wouldn't be here if we didn't have a Judge Fay decision. And I think that's really the issue that we're here for. And what I recommend and what I think we should do is pass Article One, which gets rid of legal problems. And then take the next, whatever time we want, whether six months or a year, to put together a package of restrictions or I can't get a better word than restrictions, restrictions going forward to avoid whatever problems there are. I think that through everything that's been said, there aren't a lot of problems, not a lot of complaints about short-term rentals. I think the, the issue is really, and people will deny it, it's an envy thing. We all want to have our own property. We don't want anybody near us. Leave us alone. Let us have our barbecues. Don't make any noise. But that's not, that's not the nature of a, of a summer resort. And we're a summer resort before anything else. We make, without summer resort, we wouldn't be here. So that's basically my feeling. I think we should pass one and go forward and think about possible restrictions going down the road. Number two is, we talk about neighbor against neighbor. I don't care what Mr. Irisen says or his group says or what anybody here says. If we have a restriction in terms of number of days, people are going to be counting the days that people are going to the neighbors' homes. And that's not Nantucket. It's not a democratic society, although we don't have a democratic society anymore. But legitimately, that's, we, we don't want that. I mean, I don't think the people in this Indian Tuckit really want to have to count neighbors. To count the people going to their neighbors' homes so that we can do something or enforce something that really shouldn't be enforceable. It shouldn't be an issue. That's me. Bye.
Thank you, Peter. Now, I know you want to say something.
I do. Either just confirm why, check your politics at the jetties, you're going to look here and make a difference. You just proved it. So okay, I want to talk about the term short-term rental. That is what the actual problem is. We have been doing seasonal rentals for years. Forget about the 100-year stuff. That you weren't coming on a weekend from Bedford. So it, it, let's just say since 1985, when it became a little easy to get here, is when the seasonal rental became normal. There was probably eight swimming pools on Nantucket in 1985, but that's when it really started. When the, but when the definition of actuals from the state came down in 2018, I believe. We didn't know about it until 2019, but I think it was adopted in 2018. December 30th. Very, very good. The young's call. So that's when all of a sudden we could cherry pick a seasonal rental and separate the 32-day and more versus this less than 32, which is insanity over here, especially when it takes to come here, what it costs. But that's how this got going. There was no, there's never would be an article against seasonal rentals. But technically, we split the summer rental industry, program, whatever you want to call it, the market, the, the season into two different categories now. That is what the problem is. Nobody in the planning department, and I've been involved in planning for over 20 years, no one ever talked about renting your house being illegal and having to put it into zoning. Like, like parking boats and yachts. We've talked about those work trailers. We've talked about all kinds of stuff. The super 20-foot containers is the new hottest thing ever. Like, but renting never, never was brought up because it was an assumed right by everybody. But the complaining part was never this even close to this level until the definition was put in by the state, which has divided this community. And that is why Article One is the solution to get us to that point where we could have been years ago if we had known this was going to happen. Like zoning, we didn't have a zoning map with 16 districts in 1972. I can tell you that. It was a simple zoning that, you know, vote the town meeting to get four districts. Now we have a whole different system, but it took all those years to do. We're going back to the beginning. We have to legalize this in order to regulate it. Thank you, Jill. Madam Chair.
Is anybody, is anybody hands raised? Anybody? Any questions?
Should I? So also?
I, I have a question because since we're here and we're fortunate to have two planning board members here too. On the long-term leases, do you? Either one of you answer this. I, do you feel like it's a good thing to have added that in order to just, I don't know, protect people for future lawsuits? I mean, we didn't know people were going to sue over the short-term rentals. So I feel like what they're trying to do is, I mean, I don't know that people won't sue in the long term. I don't know.
I think it's safe to be said. I don't think it's a terrible idea. I don't think it has a lot of impact, but, but I think that, again, we have a permissive zoning laws, and if it's not provided for, then it's not a law. So I would say that it's, it's not going to hurt anything we're building, I know. And, and who knows? Who has the, the crystal ball? So I, I don't think it's damageable in any way by any.
Okay. What, I just want, Nat, did you want to?
No, I agree.
Okay. No, no, you go ahead, Matt Fee. Thank you.
It's, Judge Fay is, wasn't signaling that we have to do that. You know, it, it, just like he's not signaling we have to put 14 days as exempt. Because that's not written in our zoning, but it's, you know, but it's the law. It's how, it's how the whole country works. 14 days, you know, pay taxes. Everyone knows that. It's the same thing with the 30 days. So you know, it's not the, some people are saying we have to do this on the long term or else. I don't believe that. If we do it right. I think what we're talking about is there's a quote from Charles Munger, "Show me the incentive and I'll show you the outcome." Penny was talking earlier about how we have so many fewer inns. Well, that's because the incentives went against them. Matt Parker, Nat talked about this last night. The incentives went against them. We've lost them. They've turned into, you know, they've turned into summer homes and a lot of them are rentals. And, and so I think, you know, what we have to think about isn't where we are now. I don't believe. I think the city, like, it's not going to stay static. We're going to add 50 or 100 homes a year. Homes are going to convert to short-term rental use in and out. They're going to convert to vacation use over time. I think what we should be thinking about is where, where do we want to be? You know, in five or 10 years. So we should be putting incentives in place for, you know, for that. And I believe that that's, you know, I, I think that that's that's the, what we should be thinking. That's what we should think about. And
Wait, can I ask you a question? What do you mean by we should put incentives in place? I don't understand that.
Well, I, I think we should, like, there are incentives in Article Two that are, that are incentivizing. People will figure it out, like, you know, if, like, if Article Two were to pass, I know we're supposed to talk only about one, you know, I'll talk about one.
Talk about two. I wasn't saying that. I just wanted the proponents to open up, and I wanted to talk about one. And I know people are going to go back and forth, but.
Yeah, no, I, I think that the question is, do we want to? What I'm seeing is a business, you know, Brian isn't the only person who works. I was up baking bread this morning and I'm going back and working again. And what I'm seeing, you know, in the, you know, in my business is it's very, there's no, there's no employees. There's nowhere for them to live. People are closing earlier because there's no housing. All the places that used to be housing around my three housing lots are now transitioning to something else. So we are, you know, we're talking about running an economy without employees. You know, and so we're talking about economic viability, sustainability of this island. Is that, we, I always talk about the bakery. I talked about the airport back in the day and I said, do we want to build the airport for the peak? Do we want to build the airport big enough to handle two months and then have this huge monstrosity the rest of the year that we have to eat and maintain? We didn't did it anyway. And then parts of it aren't big enough because it changed. But my bakery, I'm too small for two months. I'm just about right for six months and I'm too big for part of the year. We have to think of, I think we should, economy-wise, we should be thinking about that and trying to spread it out. People, what I'm seeing, the, the year has shrunk. We, we were worried about the 12 months of August back in the pipeline days. We have four or five weeks of summer now and a few weekends. The, the amount of business can double for certain businesses overnight. The same exact weather, the year before it was busy, and it can double overnight. It's like, and the changes that happened were like 85 or 90, that's right. But it wasn't necessarily the state defining it. It was online listings. It was, you know, the, it was the high-speed boat and immediacy of getting people out here. And, and I think all of those things are not in our favor. You know, and I think if, what, if we don't moderate it somewhat, I think that we will end up with a we will end up with a less desirable island at the peak weeks. And I, and and it won't protect. There's a lot of talk about how this is going to protect the the regular people. The regular people are already being outcompeted. You know, I know people that used to rent their house for, and they used to get six or eight weeks. They don't get any now. It's, you know, 20-year-old house and it doesn't have a pool. They've been outcompeted. And so, you know, so the idea that this is for them, this isn't for them. You know, this is not that, you know, the hosted stay would be for them. But I don't think that this, you know, the idea of unlimited and, you know, and, and, and meeting the peak forever doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, I, I think that that's, and I think the, the other, only other point is if we vote, if this is passed, going back later and trying to put this back in the bottle will be very difficult. I think the, the intelligent thing is to, if you don't open the barn door, let the horses out and then try to get them back. I think you open it slowly. And I think that Article Two is an attempt to do that. And I think if we don't do that, we will be sort of, we will be opening it completely and we have, we won't get it back. Thank you.
You have Kate and Joe online and then Steve, I think Stephen.
You have Kit and Joe online, and then Steve, I think Stephen and then-
Do we know who went first? Sorry.
Kit was, Kit was up first on.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Kit, would you like to open up here?
I would. First, I'd like to apologize because when I went to put my hand up, I inadvertently hit the clapping hand symbol, which was not what I meant to do. I didn't want to clap or put thumbs down for anybody. I, um, just want to step back to something Penny Dye said in her demographic characterization of the proponents of Article Two. She said the proponents of Article Two were people who didn't have to work anymore. And that's not entirely true. Actually, I'm going to say that's not true. Yes, there are some of us who don't work anymore because we're retired and too old to work. But there are also people who do work on the island who support Article Two. And just like there are people who are retired and don't work that support Article One, I think the fair thing to say is there are all stripes of people on the island who support Article One, and there are those same similar stripes of Nantucketers that support Article Two. And I just don't think you can cut a hard and fast line that the proponents of Article Two are only people who don't have to work. I just thought that was a very unfair comment and, um, wanted to speak up about it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. If I may, can you sort of make a correction here? Uh, that's not what I said. What I, what I said is that Article Two is an article being dictated by those who do not have to work. Dictated to me is quite different than the word proponents, okay? What I'm talking about is the people that have openly supported this, um, one of which is a political action committee called ACNA. That's what I know.
Thank you, Penny. When you were there, hands, oh, Joe.
Joe talking.
And that's fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, how are you?
It's just, can we just stop for a second? Because this is my first day ever chairing the finance committee, so.
Congratulations.
I, I, I'm concerned about forum rules, and I just, I'm not positive, like, I think we're all considered being in this meeting, whether you're online or not, is my understanding, and I just want to make sure. I have two members of the planning board here, Joe. I have Paul and Dave. Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I apologize first of all. I didn't realize that Joe was coming and we have.
I did ask you.
But, um, and I didn't realize Joe was coming, so, so my bad. I apologize. So, I, I would like to actually turn to, uh, Mr. Giorgio and ask him how we should proceed.
Mr. Giorgio?
So, there's a quorum of the planning board present in the room?
Yeah, it's not in the room. Well, not in the room. One's online and two are in the room.
So, there are three members of the planning board?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so, I think, I think individual planning board members may speak um, by addressing the finance committee. Um, but they should not engage in deliberations amongst themselves, if that makes sense.
Well, so I guess my question is, if Joe says something and Dave wants to respond, then maybe that, are you saying that we shouldn't do that?
I wouldn't do that.
I would, yeah. I would not have any planning board member respond to any comments made by another planning board member.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate the clarification. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Joe, if you would like to go ahead, let it loop.
John, uh, yeah, so in the Wall Street Journal, they have a, you know, New York City crackdown on Airbnbs. And one of the things that they said after a two-year review, it did not create any improved housing supply. It didn't help in any way, shape, or form. And to Matt Fee's point, like, let's have this go in Article Two, and we could just, like, adjust it. Well, we've been at this for six years, and so are we going to be able to, like, you know, turn the dial and bring it back and forth and adjust it if the economic impacts are, are, you know, um, devastating to, you know, forty million dollars is what Brian, I think, said last night, and, you know, next year it's eighty, and then the next year after that it keeps compounding. And what happens is rates are going up and hotel rates go up by eight to ten percent because there's no SDRs. Um, you know, I just think these impacts are going to be quite large and, and unforeseen at this moment. As a planning board, we didn't, Dave went out to the public and to some of the stakeholders and met with people, but he didn't then have it set, open up at the planning board and say, let's discuss this. We were accused, you know, at an NPDC meeting, you know, with all the members not holding a public forum for articles that's before, you know, going to go to the State House and before a town meeting. So, now just a willy-nilly to, like, bring this forward in a two-meeting shotgun style. We got to get a, you know, it's a deadline, and you guys are going to meet, you know, today, and it, it's just, everything's being rushed. We don't have the financials. We haven't reviewed them. We haven't discussed them. It, we're really in a bad place. After the meeting, I got two text messages from local families that have to rent, and they, like, were screwed. We're not going to make it, and they're probably going to have to sell, and there's, there's no one caring about that. The other part of it, it, this is also, as I said last night, it does not take into account the young twenty-to-thirty-year-old that's going to come to Nantucket for a wedding to see their friends. I had one summer, I had six weddings. I ran around and I went to different, you know, locations with the Massachusetts and New York. And every time, I could only stay for, like, three days, max four, but I was back. So, this is going to hurt and, and not allow to, some of this to happen. And this is where it's, a lot of these small business, mom-and-pop businesses are going to fail. This is going to have a impact that is not foreseen, that we cannot know. And one of the things my brother always says, being the FAA, but, you know, they always ask a question, but what if? And we haven't done that. The planning board hasn't done its due diligence in an open forum, but what if? We weren't able to ta- open Article Two. We weren't able to open up Article One and kind of break it down. It was like, oh, this is a razor's edge. Don't touch, no, knife's edge. Don't touch it. There's just so many things that we just don't know. I just know a local family that had to send their family off to Michigan because they wanted to pay, pay off some of their student loans that they had for their kids. There's other things that we just don't know, but there's, that's the but what if that no one is answering. We just don't know that. We're rushing for this small group of people that are all retirees, that don't care, that have a second home. But what are the local persons? Like, that is the person. It's, it's the, the haves against the have-tos. And that's the problem right in Nantucket. We, we don't, we're not representing it, and so, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Chair, can I interrupt for a minute? Um, could you ask, that we need to ask the Zoom user to identify themselves, please?
Yes, but the Zoom user.
This is Jessie Bell. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know how to change this on my phone. Um.
Thank you, Jessie. I might be able to do it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for identifying yourself.
Yep, and I'd love to speak at some point, um, whenever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to talk now, Jessie?
Sure. Um, I just want to back up, uh, sort of Joe's comments and also Peter Schaefer's comments. Um, I am someone that, um, I, I would fall into the hosted stay category, so I would potentially, I guess, benefit from Article Two passing, um, because I would be exempt. But I feel bad for, um, a lot of the people out there who, you know, have come to depend and rely on this rental income, um, as part of their, you know, formula for, um, financial survival here on Nantucket. And, um, I think that, uh, there is definitely a silent majority of people that don't want to step into this, um, you know, into the spotlight on this issue because it's been so polarizing and contentious in the community. Um, but I think we should be thinking about this as a two-step process. I think that first we should be le- legalizing it, um, and then we should be carefully considering individual restrictions and the impact those restrictions are going to have on the community. Because I think that not doing that, um, would be really irresponsible and almost reckless, uh, because I don't, I just, you know, it just has, we haven't had the time to, to really understand the impact of, of the restrictions imposed by Article Two. Um, and I guess the other point that Peter made, which I thought was just, um, I wanted to build on, is that, you know, we are, and, and Brian Sullivan said this last night too, that, you know, there is going to be a little bit of a secret police created. It's going to be neighbors spying on neighbors, and we're sort of fanning the flames of conflict in, in the community, and I don't really think that that's good for the community. And, um, and, and then I have a lot of questions about implementation and, and how that's going to, um, happen. And, uh, you know, who, and are, who, are we paying for that? And how many people is that going to require? And how's it going to all be monitored? And is it just enforcement by complaint? Or are we submitting, you know, every rental contract? I mean, I just have so many questions about implementation. Um, so, I'm just, I know, I know I'm throwing a lot of thoughts out there, but, um, there's a lot of people that have struggled really hard to be able to afford that piece of Nantucket real estate and, um, being able to leverage it in the, in the way that, um, they need to, you know, to be able to afford their mortgage payments and to just, it's, it's become, uh, it's become part of the, what, you know, an important part of, of, of how they survive here. And I feel like Article Two is really a market intervention that, um, change things, changes things in a pretty radical way. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Jessie. Okay, I am going to recommend that we suspend the-
Well, actually.
Sorry.
Stephen and Ed wanted to speak.
Oh, sorry. Do you did, I didn't see any hands.
Yeah, I'm good. We're going to talk about Article Two.
I, I want to get to that. Stephen, did you want to talk about? I know it's hard to talk about one without the other, but I think you heard me say in the beginning, if you.
Yeah, and, and I-
We're, we're, we're spilling into that discussion on Article Two, and I think if you want to do that, then you, I kind of wanted to address Article One and then get to two, but of course, go ahead and speak, Stephen.
Trying, trying to determine if this is more about Article Two. It, it has to do with something that Matt said, so maybe I'll respond to it now, and for the note taker, this is Stephen Maury. Um, so, so Matt made a good point about incentives drive out price. And I think he's just maybe looking at it through a different lens, but what I see is we've got a system right now that floodgates are open, is, is the term that people like to use. And we're not seeing more short-term rental properties come to market. But if we reduce the number of days that these properties available for rent, we will see more homes enter the market to meet the demand. You know, people are not going to decide, Nantucket's not fun anymore, so I'm not going to go there. But they won't be able to rent the properties that are currently registered and permitted and available for rent. So, new homeowners are going to make that economic decision that, well, there's an unmet demand, and I can get more money for renting my property short-term than I can get long-term. So, now we have more homes that are going to be added at short-term. That's not the desired outcome. Um, and I, I don't think anybody wants that, but that is what will happen. And to Matt's point about not building for the peak or, you know, we want to spread out the economy. Well, why then are we limiting properties to twenty-one days of rental between September first and June fourteenth? It doesn't make good sense for Matt's business or for anybody else. For the, um, Nancy Bean spoke about the food and wine festival. Um, but there are all sorts of other events, private events, uh, fundraisers, all sorts of things that happen outside that peak. They can't be accommodated in twenty-one days. And so, um, I, you can determine if that was-
No, I know. I think that's a great area. We all have one thing in common on Nantucket. We like gray. Thank you. Um, Mr. Samper.
Edward Samper. I, I will speak to Article One.
Thank you.
What was said before, just to reiterate, this is really to put an end to the legal lawfare that's been, that has descended on Nantucket for the last five years by one individual and one lawyer, and they convinced one judge. So, three people have turned this community upside down, and it's time to put an end to that. And as I said last night at the planning board hearing, the opponents of SDR's talked consistently about how we failed to codify short-term rentals in the town meetings, and that is true because you need two-thirds of the vote to change the zoning bylaw. But in the last two attempts in twenty-four and currently in twenty-five, sixty percent of the voters, over sixty percent of the voters, voted in favor of codification. So, it seems logical that there is a movement afoot, that, that, that the community recognizing what the judge could do literally tomorrow to shut down the short-term rental business on Nantucket. The community is, I think, is getting fed up and realizes that if they don't act, it's going to be a really bad economic scenario for everyone. So, Article One for, just deals with that explicitly. It puts an end to the lawsuits. It takes care of the long-term rental vagueness, and we can move forward. And then what I disagree with is there's assumption if Article One passes, no more short-term rental regulation will come forward. And I just don't, I don't think any of us in this room believe that. I mean, there have been multiple attempts to regulate short-term rentals. They've all failed, sometimes dramatically, but they're going to come. There are people that seem to think, and I don't agree with it, but this is what they think, that short-term rentals are, that the epicenter of massive, the, the housing problem on Nantucket. We hear it time and again. Get rid of short-term rentals and we'll have more year-round housing. And I don't believe that, but let, let the, let the town meetings decide. Bring forth specific regulations to deal with their concerns. But just let's get rid of the lawfare. Let's, let's get rid of this, this, this horrible thing that's been hanging over this community for the last five years. Get Article One passed and then start coming up with concerted regulations that may help this community in some small fashion. Uh, I've got to go, and I can't speak to Article Two. I just would go back to what Steve said. It's highly restricted. It'll kill this, this, the shoulder season. What's left of the shoulder season? You know, when I'm, when I was here, I moved here in nineteen seventy-one. Through the eighties, there were more year-round restaurants open in the eighties and nineties than there are now. I mean, we, we all live here off-season. This, this place is a ghost town from, from base. Once Christmas stroll is over, everything shuts down until April. Yeah. You know, it's, and it's, it was not like that. And, and again, it's because of the, probably because of the demographic of the community. I mean, there are many more people here than there were in the nineteen eighties. But there were a lot of good restaurants open in the eighties. I know because I used to go to them, you know? Twenty-one Federal was open year-round. And so, we, we've lost that. And by eliminating the last few people, short-term renters who could come here off-seasons to say, sorry, you just can't come. You're going to have to stay. Well, there are no hotels open either. But, you know, it's just, it's going to crush the, 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 the season, the business. It just gets those few little crumbs in, you know, October, November, December. It's going to be gone, and I think that's a huge mistake, huge mistake. So, thank you.
I never knew that Twenty-one Federal was open year-round. That is some real news.
Seventy-one.
I didn't.
It was a condition of their license.
Oh, well, maybe the strike board was to take that up.
There are about as many old restaurants open now in the winter than there, as it was in seventies. Little Glufen, you know, they only have four or five, which it's just, uh, anyhow, it's a complex economic issue on which you folks the best of luck in.
Thank you, and I'm trying to get to that. So, Penny, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just, I think, just hopping on what Edward said about, we need to be honest about housing. And a typical short-term rental is a, a four-bedroom house, maybe inside with a pool. That is never going to be an affordable year-round housing for a living, I think. It's not, they're parallel markets.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'd like to do.
I, I don't quote already, but I just want to just make a comment about something that was said. There's a couple of comments about hotels that were mentioned, and I just want to tell you all. Nantucket, town meeting, voting to ban hotels outside of, at that time would be the ROH district. But they didn't have CDP at that time. So, the zoning-
But they didn't have CDP at, at that time. So the zoning used to be RC. Out, all this RC two you hear about used to be RC. That got started by a company that was going to buy the old top plant, which is nausea. And that was a, that was an asphalt plant. Just play over there, like, well, I can prove it, guys. But anyway, the truth. So anyway, when that got banned throughout the whole island and they took out hotels from RC and left it just in town, we, we are never going to have another Nantucket Inn, another, another Nantucket Hotel, a, a Marriott. Anyway, no, none of that's going to ever happen here. Okay, Beachside Motel is going to maybe get expanded. Like, that was, it's a one-story built in the sixties. That's not going to happen anymore. So we're always going to have that natural peak of the hotel industry versus renting houses. I just want you to know that.
Okay. No hotels can be here because they can't generate the cash flow.
Well.
Right? I mean, that's the bottom line. This is the whole thing I'm trying to say. They can't afford the property. Okay, they can't build a hotel. They can't staff the hotel, and they can't have housing for their employees. It is economically impossible for any hotel to be built here now. Zero.
Like many other things.
But if, last thing I'm going to say, um, I was lucky enough to spend every summer here with my family. And they rented the same house in Quinnip for fifty years. And we were six people and a dog. And somebody at the planning board on the twenty-fourth, I think it was, said, well, if there are fewer short-term rentals, people can just go stay in the hotels. And I'm picturing six of us with a giant golden retriever. That's not sensible. And people started renting homes because it was more economical. You could cook your own meals. You weren't having to go out all the time. I mean, it's just a cultural thing.
Thank you.
Can't help myself, real quick.
Yeah.
We, that, we, there's a potential, there's going to be redevelopment downtown on the harbor. There's a potential that that could be a hotel, but that, you know, but there's also a potential that can be high-end condos. No, which is what happens in a lot of places. It can be a whoop, you know. So that's, so there's no never here, number one. Number two, I was really fortunate. I got to spend some time with Walter Barna, keep close to when he died. And what he told me was, he was, he sort of had the vision that sort of started Nantucket. What he told me was when he went up and advised the Legazi family up in Newburyport, Mass, he advised them, put hotels on the water. Don't make the mistake that Nantucket did. Don't turn every home into a, you know, into a rental because you'll lose your community. And they listened to him and they built, you know, they were building, and now it's owned by IR, but they built more, they built more capacity. They don't need as much as us. But they've built more capacity on their water and it's helped drain back their downtown. I had a business there for a few years, fifteen, twenty years ago, and, and it worked out. Newburyport, Mass. And so he, his advice to them, learning from what he did here and saw here was to, you know, that we made a mistake doing with that doctor's. And I agree that we said, oh, we don't want any hotels. But in retrospect, it was, you know, it is her, it has harmed our community.
But I think that's why it's generated so many rentals in the ROH, which I think is a significant number of
Twenty-eight percent.
So, I, because people do want to be downtown and they, they are renting down there and they are walking. And I feel like that's kind of helping with the traffic issue a little bit too. Um, I don't know if the, that the renting cars are not. I, I don't know. But I think they want to be down there because they want to walk. And they want to walk to the water. And they want to walk to the shops and the businesses. Anybody else? Okay, I want to suspend the public hearing. And I would like us to see if we have somebody that'd like to make a motion for Article One. Now, we are not actually making a motion on Article One as much as we are making a motion on the planning board's motion. And they actually had a motion last night to take no action. No, no. And then they had this comment, and I don't know if you all saw that. I'll read it aloud. This article would resolve zoning issues related to short-term rental litigation that this town and some residents have faced. However, the majority of the board felt that it was not restrictive enough and did not include adequate limitations. Okay.
So our motion would be directly to the article then?
Well, this was tricky because take no action is one of those gray areas, um, and our, our ombudsman on take no action, Chris Glackey, is not here today, so.
We know what the vote was.
Three to two.
It was three to two. It's, oh, you don't have that one up there, Stephen, that would.
No.
Well, we got, we have that on our email. Yeah.
Can we propose?
Leslie.
Can we propose somebody we could vote on that would supersede this?
Directly on the article.
Can we, can we, the finance committee propose that we discuss and take a vote on a motion that would supersede what's written there?
I don't know that we can do that. Well, I don't know, I don't think it supersedes, but we can have our own motion. And, um, or we can respond to their motion and then we can make a comment, or we could do both. Right?
Okay.
That's what we have. Wait a second.
Yeah, Mrs. Georgia is Susanna.
He's there. Because I thought we can go to support or, or to support the planning board motion or to deny the planning board motion, right?
Right, or not support.
Not support.
Right, we can't, we can do that.
And, and then we can also comment on the warrant article itself.
Right, so take no action is a little more confusing than a flat-out denial and maybe, um, that, so if you want to clarify, kind of, do we support it or not support it? Then we can have a comment about, you know, what that means. It's not, it's not
Action would we take to support Article One versus not support Article One?
I don't.
For or against the planning board? I just like, it's A or B, right? What do we have to do to make one of two of those choices?
John can clarify, but I believe your action is to either support or not support the planning board's motion.
You can, but isn't it also contingent then on what our decision will be to vis a vis the warrant?
John, is that correct?
We got two issues here. We got, we, we're asked to respond to the planning board. And then we have a warrant article that is asking our opinion on that as well. So we have two decisions to make, I believe.
John.
John, go ahead and weigh in.
John.
Thank you. I'm here. I'm here.
So the finance committee is asking?
I, I think, I think that the traditional role of the finance committee vis a vis zoning articles has been either to, well, in most cases, to support the recommendation of the planning board. But, um, you could certainly, in this case, make a motion not to support the planning board recommendation. And then the question becomes, um, the moderator typically, if there is a, either the finance committee or the planning board make a motion not to support or take no action or whatever you want to call it, she will afford the petitioners an opportunity to make a positive motion, which will be voted on first. Um, the, the finance committee could, in addition to a motion not to support the planning board recommendation, you could also say, and we recommend favorable action. On Article One, which I think is probably, if that's where the finance committee is, I would recommend motion not to support the planning board recommendation. Period. The finance committee further recommends favorable action on Article One.
And that would be our motion. So that would not be a comment that the actual
That's correct. That would be the actual motion. That's correct.
If, if that was what we
If that's what we
If that's what we agree.
Yeah, I mean, this, I, so why don't we have some discussion amongst ourselves? This is, since I've suspended the public hearing, I can't take public comment.
No, no, I was going to ask, there's going to be discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's open it up.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go first, so I think to me, you can't talk about one without talking about two. And I think it's, I'm, I'm actually glad that we have this clear choice in front of us at this meeting because other town meetings were worried about, are we going to have time to get to these? And I, this is really clear. It's, do we want to have the ability to choose what we do with our property? Or do we want Peter McCoslin to act now to choose what we do with our property? So I would support a motion to not
Support this.
Planning board and put the comma to support the article.
Okay, so I would support the planning board's no
Take no action.
Take no action motion, because I actually don't think the article goes far enough to that with any restriction. But since we're also talking about Article Two here, I also can't support Article Two. It has too much restriction and not enough study done on it. And I know that the temperature of the town is to do something with restriction. And that's probably a good idea, but I don't think we've had enough time to digest it. I think Brian's numbers in that presentation was very illuminating. I, so I cannot support Article Two either. But when we really focus in on number one, I don't know if I like long-term rental being in there because I feel like it, like for time immemorial, if you bought a house, you can rent it out. Right? So the fact that we think we need to codify long-term leases in a general or zoning bylaw, I'm not sure we need to do that. And I also, I, I, I just don't know if I, I, I think that that's a great idea because also it opens up the door for that to potentially be restricted at some time, which I would be highly against, right? People should be able to rent their house.
Right, but that's why we're
I understand that.
Short-term rental.
The short, I understand that.
That, because it was challenged in court.
Yep, yep. But I think that the challenge in court was for a particular group, right? Of people that had a political agenda. And, uh, you know, you can support or not support that. And I think that that's a separate issue from regulation of short-term rentals.
But you don't see that being a vulnerability, like, you just think no one's going to do that. No one's going to sue. I mean, I don't think anybody I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, I agree. I would have liked to. So I think, one, I think that in the general scheme of things, we're going to go to another town meeting where people are going to get up on both sides and there's going to be a considerable amount of voter confusion. By the time fifteen people speak on each side, everyone in the audience has no idea what anybody is talking about anymore. Number one. Number two, I think that from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, this finance committee can't vote yes on number two. Right? I think that that's our job, right? Regardless of our personal opinions, there is too much pretending for damage to the Nantucket's economy. And we don't understand it fully enough, even if some of us or many of us think that there should be some level of restriction. And, you know, number three, I already talked about, I don't think we need to codify a long-term lease. Number four is I think there's been a rush to do this and we could have had more time for some conversation. I think that, um, you know, we're, we're a little bit premature. And I think to Matt's point about incentives and businesses, and I think the, the, the economics of people having businesses here and running businesses here, it's very difficult. When, when you, and every single thing boils down to housing. Right? It boils down to housing and it's, it's, it's really disrupting our economy in such a significant way. I agree with the, the, some of the sentiments in the crowd about, um, separating the short-term rental from affordable housing. They're not the same issue. And I agree with what Penny said. You know, limiting short-term rental is not going to have a great effect on all of a sudden there being magical houses appearing for people. Right? We have an economics problem, right? And I don't know how we're going to solve this, but I'm not sure that either of these two things are going to do that. I think that the purpose in Article One, preventing the lawsuits, I can see that. But I think that I'm concerned that once we do this, there wouldn't be more work done on how do we manage short-term rentals.
You, so you are, what I think I hear you saying is that you don't want to put forth anything to codify, or let's say, put a Y, because Stephen, I don't agree on the word codify, I don't think, to put a Y in the U chart, because you think no one's going to come forward with more restrictions later?
I just think that if they do, it will, it will, it'll just muddy the water and not pass. I mean, so
It'll lose fifty percent.
But it was, well, it was a general bylaw. I mean, we're so close. We, we're so close on that sixty percent, right? The two-thirds vote piece.
I, I just, I get it, but I'm not sure there's enough restrictions in the article.
Okay, um, Joe Sandson. Mr. Wright, we'd like to hear from you.
I got, I have two things. Number one, if we open the barn door and allow short-term rentals unlimited, may not
Yes.
Increase the number of year-round houses for, for workers. I think it'll reduce the number of year-round houses because I think it's much more financially attractive to own a short-term rental than it is to own a private residence. And I think you will see private residences redeveloped as short-term rentals. That's number one. Number two, this is a community that was thinking about spending a hundred and thirty-five million dollars on a new our island home earlier this year. And the ability to find two and a half million dollars if there is some diminishment of the fees from short-term rentals, I can't believe that that's a serious problem if we were really thinking about spending thirty-five million dollars on our island home. And, and I guess I'm kind of where Joanna is. I would support the planning board's motion to take no action. And I would think that Article Two is too restrictive. So I would, I would take no action on that as well.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Mr. McCary, would you like to speak?
Well, one, I'd, I'd just like my general comment. Um, this keeps on getting called Peter McCoslin, the Act Now, um, article. And I think Dave Iverson would comment, it's more than just one person's input into this. So this is a planning board warrant article. This is not Act Now's warrant article. I think it's unfair. Characterized workdays done that way. That's just a I just, I just don't like this with no regulation. I think this says anywhere, anyone, anytime. I think you have to have limitations of some sort and control of the use of properties, how they use and when they use. I would tend to agree that the, uh, planning board article does become very restrictive. I think that, uh, the one I'm most concerned about is the twenty-one days and the shoulder seasons. Less so than the summer season. So I would, I would, um, support the planning board's decision recommendation on this, I would take no action.
On Article One. Um, I do want to, a point to that is that we do have we do have some regulation input.
There, there are regulations, I agree.
And I will tell you that I doubt that those regulations are enforceable right now if we don't have codification. And so I do believe this is very important, like, that whatever we do, like, the people who want these regulations to ban REITs and ban corporations, I, I'm not sure I think this is enforceable. I maybe we can hear from Dave about that later, but I, I think those things are actually, um, in jeopardy. So but my point, my larger point about those regulations is that people were willing to support those regulations and the restrictions. So I do think there is an appetite for restriction. And I don't want people to think that I don't. Um, so I, and I think going forward, you could, and it would be easier to do restrictions at fifty percent if it's through a general bylaw. And I also want to remind everybody that that is actually the reason I came to that conclusion is because my good friend Dave Iverson has been pounding me over the head for about six years on this point. That we need to codify a Y in the U chart and then regulate. And he really wanted to put those things together and do them at the same time. And he did that. And you have that proof, Dave. And I'm very grateful to you for doing that. I learned a lot in that. And I do believe that is the right path. And I also understand why you are frustrated that that isn't happening and that people aren't listening to what you said. But I do feel like the finance committee did listen to what you said. And so that's why it's a little harder for me to have an appetite for Article Two. I, we're still going to listen about that. But at this time, I, I personally, I do not support the planning board motion. And I, and, um, anyway, that's, that's really the right.
Just want to follow and comment that we're talking about opening the barn doors without regulation, like Article One is maintaining the status quo. That's what we have now. So.
Thank you. Anthony, Mr. Guddaman, he's one of our newest members, along with Mr. McCary.
Thank you, I am chair. Um, comment on the, on the planning board. Uh, I've heard personally, I don't support their motion not to take no action. I think that's irresponsible. Uh, in, in terms of, I do think that there are restrictions in place. Uh, are they necessarily the appropriate ones that we might want to see, or at least discuss going forward? Um, I'm not sure. I'm going to comment in depth on, on what those restrictions do or don't do. But I do think that, uh, there are, there are mechanisms down, there are the votes for us to use uh, when necessary in order to make adjustments to the bylaws. This might be necessary. And I think that's the path that should be pursued uh, in this one. And just to take no action whatsoever, and it makes no, no sense to me whatsoever. Uh, in terms of Article Two, I think the bigger topic for me is, um, it's nice to talk about, well, we're going to lose, you know, potentially two-point-five million dollars in tax. I think the bigger topic for me is um it's nice to talk about, well, we're gonna lose, you know, potentially two point five million dollars in tax. But I think the problem is much bigger than that. It's actually a G overall GDP topic for me. So the tax revenues for certain, could they be made up? Hmm, maybe. Uh, I think there's quite some hardship in in the town to do that. I don't think it's as easy as people might think uh to to make that up. It's gonna actually certainly the type of reduction that Article Two is asking for uh i- is akin to a a meltdown of the market because this will have knock on effects as well. It's not just the direct impacts, there's indirect impacts that run across that have not been thought through. They've not been discussed, they've not been monetized. We don't understand that. So so let's take a vote and I support that one for me would also be irresponsible. So I would, I would not support the planning board's motion to take the action and I would not and 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 that's my feelings stated on the on Article Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, I'm sorry.
I believe that Article One is to remedy a legal problem. And I think that we we should do that and I do support that. I believe that Article Two is conflation of many different issues and people are piled on to this. And I believe that it needs far more thinking than what has been done. And so I am opposed to that.
Thank you. Do we want, would, does the committee want to take the motion on Article One now? And then Dave is here. We're very fortunate to have the head of the planning board here. And we're gonna hear from him and discuss Article Two as well. I know we're talking about both at the same time. I just, we're on a timeline, so that's why I thought it'd be good to get a motion and maybe they can.
Well, I'll make a motion to support Article One.
I don't think you can.
It's gonna be via not supporting the planning board and then.
I think, right. Thank you.
Madam, uh Chair, um.
Yes.
What I would recommend in terms of the form is the Finance Committee moves not to support the Planning Board's motion to take no action on Article One, period. And then you can consider adding a further sentence, the Finance Committee further recommends adoption of Article One.
Would you like to make that motion?
I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
On your motion, Jeremy, or any discussion? I gotta ask if you want any discussion on the motion. I can't see the people, Stephen, do you mind putting them up? Sorry, honey. I call everybody back. As I say that. Well, that's because I'm scared of you. Okay, um, any discussion on the motion? No. So on your motion, Jerry, wait, I gotta write it down. Okay, Jeremy.
Hi. No.
No, Joanna?
No.
No, Rob?
Hi.
Yes, Anthony?
Terrify exactly what we're voting on again, please.
Yes, sure. Mister George, do you want to?
Sorry, if it.
Yes, here.
That's my understanding. Yep.
Finance Committee moves not, Finance Committee moves not to support the Planning Board's motion to take no action on Article One. The Finance Committee further recommends adoption of Article One.
Hi.
Anthony is a Y. Joe, right?
I, yep, yep.
No.
You're a no. The Chair, the Chair is an I. So that passes four to three. Um, we we have two members of the public who have to recuse, so we just needed a quorum of of seven. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna reinstate the public hearing and we're gonna have Dave Iverson come and talk to us about Article Two. Dave, I really need Brian to talk about his numbers that came out. And so I was gonna have him just put his sheets up there. No, I was gonna have you do it now, because it wasn't really discussed at the planning board and this is the place to discuss. Yeah, I mean, I heard your comments about it. Oh, I'm glad you picked it up in person. You know, we don't get you guys, we don't get so many numbers in play where everyone's come to pick out. It's a privilege.
And you're sharing.
So we're gonna Brian, Joe, through this. I know you all saw it.
We're just, he's gonna share it so they're visible to. Okay, all right. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you just go to the second slide, Stephen? So since last week, we've kind of worked on this uh request internally because as everybody on the Finance Committee and we're in the middle of budget deliberations, so in December, we have to present a budget to town administration and we do have to have some type of understanding if the article were to pass, what the impact could be to the overall budget um for planning purposes. So the first slide just kind of details the last three years of history and or two years of history, including the first uh payment in quarter one for fiscal twenty six of the entirety of the room occupancy tax. Uh, we do get both the short term rental breakdown, they provided after they, after we received the wire. There was that last night at the meeting that I did want to mention, we have tried numerous ways to get the some type of additional breakdown of this data from the Department of Revenue. And they have repeatedly said this is the only level of detail that we can get because to go any further would go into individual taxpayer data, which is not able to be released. So this is the the absolute level that we're able to obtain on what we're receiving from short term rentals and our room occupancy tax. Our traditional lodging, excuse me, next one, please. So I wanna preface the seconds, the next two slides by saying that in my role, I have to be fairly conservative because we have to have a balanced budget. And if we underestimate the impact, it could have potential detrimental effects in the operations of the budget. Because we may not be collecting enough revenue and once we've set the tax rate, we can't make adjustments to it. And one other reason that we are extremely conservative with this is because the very first two quarters, the payments that we receive in September and December represent the largest amount of the room occupancy tax as a whole that we collect. The payments in March and May and June are far smaller as evidenced by the the Excel spreadsheet that we provided. So if those numbers are take a traumatic turn in the opposite direction, we literally only have six months to figure out how to make a correction in that. So we have, I know that I did talk to Matt about this and we have taken a somewhat conservative route on what we think will happen. I'll note that I don't know that anybody's gonna be able to perfectly accurately predict what will happen. But this is our analysis, using some assumptions and trying to come up with a number for the town administration on what we think could happen. And I'll just now take you to it. I just wanted to kind of set the stage for how we were looking.
Yeah, before you start, Brian, I want to thank you for doing this because no one, this this is not an easy thing to put together, guys, in a very short amount of time. You know, I know that Dave didn't know he was gonna have a special town meeting that he needed to respond to. And I know that we certainly didn't know that they were gonna put forward an article that we as a committee really needed more information about. So thank you, because I know that this um took a lot of work in a very short amount of time. Jeremy, go ahead.
Uh, Brian, just qualitatively, do you have any perspective on the three years of data we have of the high season? Where we see that seven million of revenues went down to a little under six and now back up to seven? I mean, how much of this do we think was the uh, you know, a response to COVID? People going to the still continuing and then the strong dollar, so they all went to earth instead of renting to here? Do we have any sense at all of what these numbers really mean? You have three years of this data.
I think in the, ever since this has been implemented, um, it's been somewhat difficult because as a town manager and I have always stated, um, we don't think we've ever seen kind of in quotation marks, a normal year since this was implemented because it started and we immediately went into COVID. We've immediately, you know, we've come out of it and and seen things now seem to be changing a little bit. I I'll be honest, when we saw the reduction in twenty five, I thought maybe it was because all of Europe had opened up and people were more inclined to travel because we saw that reduction in the first quarter. However, we see a rebound in twenty six from the same period looked by the trailing twelve month period. So I'm not sure that I can actually qualitatively give you a reason why there's suddenly this fluctuation over the last three, the last two full, full years. Um, so and I don't wanna try to presume to make a guess on that because I just, I think it's, there's a numerous set of factors that probably lead into that. So as everybody can see from the spreadsheet uh for room occupancy, the first quarter being June first to August thirty first, payment received in September thirty is typically always the largest quarter that you have. Okay, um, Article Two creates two different ways to look at the the short term rental. It creates something called the hosted stay, which if you qualify for, and in the footnotes, I did note what that definition was in the proposed article so that everybody could see it in this presentation. I'm not gonna read it or take everybody through it. Um, and it creates something that I called non-hosted stay, just to make it a little easier. If you didn't, you don't qualify for the hosted stay because you're not living on the property. Then you would fit into what I call the non-hosted stay category. I made no provisions about people finding a way to move from non-hosted to hosted, okay? Because I just don't know that I would be able to figure that out, honestly, okay? There could, there could be, and I don't discount that, but I don't believe that the data that I could look at would really be able to discern how that would happen. So I just want to put that in there, okay? Because it, I acknowledge that it is a possibility that could change this, but this is the best information we have right now. So I'm trying to determine who would fit into hosted stay and who would be a non-hosted stay. I used the, as a starting point, I used the the number of people that qualified for the residential exemption as certified in fiscal twenty five in the tax rate, which was two thousand two hundred and fifty seven. There's twelve thousand seven hundred residents on the island. So that's approximately, it's a little under eighteen percent would qualify. We believe of the thirteen hundred and fifty one would qualify for the place to stay. That leaves a remaining roughly eighty, just a little under eighty two percent in one thousand one hundred and eleven people would qualify or be considered a non-hosted stay and therefore would be subject to the restrictions as proposed in Article Two. And that's the starting point to calculate all of this, okay? Um, I did look at some Airbnb data and present, and I talked to at least one principal owner of a real estate firm who kind of tried to help guide me in terms of the amount of estimated number of people renting at every, any given point during that restriction period. We have, if you look at Airbnb data, it's roughly, pardon me.
Yield, you mean?
Yeah, how many, any, at any point in time, how many people are actively renting and then would be subject to those restrictions in that period? To try to calculate the revenue that would be then sixty percent would be paid from, okay? So we've gone with call it rent, the people renting occupancy, seventy five percent of the either hosted or non-hosted stay are actively engaged in a rental in that restriction period, okay? Now, from June fifteenth to September thirtieth, it's seventy eight days of rental period that there's available. On the left hand side, the hosted stays, they have no restrictions on the amount of time that they can rent. So seventy five percent of two forty is a hundred and eighty. We estimated nine hundred dollars a night. I will say that I put all of this into ChatGPT after and got brought to Airbnb, who said that the median rate from June first to November thirtieth is seven hundred and sixty six dollars. Now, obviously, there's many more high end properties that rent for a lot, but there's also substantial amounts that potentially rent for lower. Trying to take a little bit of an account, I actually, we raised it to nine hundred. I actually had calculated nine hundred before even looking at any of that. So um a few people throughout the in in the ownership of brokerages have told me that it is potentially relatively close. It might be a little bit low in the high season, but it's probably a little bit higher in the solar season, which is why I tried to do it across the same platform all the way.
Brian, just reminding that hosted stay, I mean, per site, they're exactly what the person is living on property.
So if you go to, I'll read it to you now. I was hoping not to, but I will do it. That's fine.
Oh, you did put it down there.
Yeah, it's in the foot.
So in in the footnote in bullet, footnote three, a hosted stay, and Dave, correct me if I don't have this exactly right, but I believe I do. A hosted stay is defined in the proposed Article Two zoning change and the proposed general bylaw change as an overnight stay where a short whereby a short term renter occupies a portion of a dwelling unit where the owner or operator is present or occupies a selling second dwelling unit on the same lot where the owner or operator is present as an owner operator is considered present when the owner or operator is on the premises except during the daytime and or work hours. Is that, did I get that?
No, having you in front of me, that sounds spot on.
Okay.
But but away from the the all the definition, it means they have a little guest house, they rent the guest house. And they get a bedroom and they rent a bedroom while they're in the other bedroom. Or in the.
They're on the property somehow, somewhere, on the property.
And out back and.
Owner or operator, that's important.
Assuming during this period, there's a hundred and eighty actively engaged in renting and charging in a nine hundred dollar a night rent uh rent nightly rate produces a hundred and sixty two thousand, a hundred and forty three dollars a day in hosted, from generated from hosted stays, okay? Multiplied by the seventy eight days because they have no restriction in that period would generate approximately twelve point six million dollars of revenue. And from that, the town would collect or be remitted to us seven hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. Employing the same exact methodology for non-hosted stays, however, proposed Article Two has a restriction in the June, June fifteenth to August thirty first of forty nine days. So a non-hosted state can utilize their property as a short term rental for sixty two percent of the seventy eight days. Using that as the restriction and the collar around this would produce thirty six point seven million dollars of revenue paid to short term operators. They would in turn remit six percent of that to the town, thereby being two point two million. The total combining the two is two point nine, two point nine six four million. As you, yeah.
I I saw saw these numbers last night. Ten o'clock, I think. But you are assuming that with this restriction, these houses were previously rented for the entire season. They in that that June, June fifteenth to August thirty first, you're assuming.
I'm not, I'm making an assumption that they're gonna make, they're gonna, I'm making assumption that at any given point, seventy five percent are, we're restricting them to forty nine days to determine the revenue that would be
Right.
generated and would be taxable.
So but how many days were you assuming that property was rented out prior to restrictions of forty nine days? So you're also assuming it's been rented out for the entire forty nine days.
Seventy five percent, seventy five percent of the thirteen hundred registrations at forty nine days, is that right?
No, I think what he's asking is did I have a, have we?
What was it before?
What was it before? And I don't, I I don't know the past.
I'm I'm looking for an understanding what 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 creates the difference in these numbers. I mean, so if you're assuming it's rented out for seven, all seventy eight days or not.
No, the non-hosted stays can only rent for forty nine days.
You're asking historical fact. And the problem is the state sends the the town four million, four point three million dollars. But the state has, for their own reasons and for lack of, for privacy reasons, has not provided the breakdown that you actually want.
Yeah, I can't get the breakdown of how many people are renting, how many days prior to.
So it would be great if we knew that numbers, but we don't have that. Okay, yeah, got it.
Basically losing twenty nine days for every non-hosted stay. And the nightly rate.
So getting to what we received this year, which was on the first slide that we presented, was four point three million. We're conservatively estimating that the first quarter, we would see a drop of one point four million dollars in the room occupancy tax that we collected. Again, it doesn't make any provisions for new entrance into the market, conversions to hosted stays. I'm not sure that I think we would see with the restrictions a large number of new entrance into the market, but that's some, something for somebody else with a better understanding of human behavior than I have. So um, you want to go to the second slide, the next slide? So September through November quarter.
Yes, before we go off that, just quick, make sure I have this right, because I'm looking at it a different way. So if you've lost twenty nine rental days per non-hosted property, right? That's like twenty six thousand dollar loss per property based on those restrictions.
Potentially, yeah.
Times eight hundred and thirty three of them is twenty one million of lost rental.
Potentially, yeah, right. Now, the um yeah, and actually I can, I'll give you that because I have done the calculation based on the two point five million dollar reduction inverted by the six percent tax to give you what that will look like.
I have another question. Do you know what the um occupancy was for the last couple of years? Like, you're guessing seventy five percent, but what what's the historical over the last few years? Maybe.
I I that we, I don't know. I we, I.
Penny, maybe she's sorry. So what I'm curious about is in the in from historical perspective, like the last few few years, say, so it's twenty twenty. In the, in, from historical perspective, like the last few, few years, say, so twenty twenty five, so twenty four, twenty three, twenty two. What was the occupancy of rentals?
Well, it depends, some people only wanna rent for two weeks.
No, 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 so he, we're just using a, an aggregate here of seventy five percent to come up with the calculation, so I'm just curious, like, in. Would it be eighty percent the summer before, or like I'm thinking in the year of the covid, it was closer to ninety percent or higher? Right, that, that short term rentals were occupied over this.
Asking of what was available, what percentage was occupied?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I don't, I don't know, you have to look at all the Airbnb and Air D N A divided as well, but with the major places.
Dave, you wanna work on that?
Tell you in twenty twenty four. There was seventy seven thousand. Rental nights used in the peak period. And there was about ninety three thousand of it.
Seventy seven thousand out of ninety three thousand?
Slightly higher.
And I can, and I can further go into the. Excuse me, I'm gonna take that back, that. That was that peak number, that was the peak number, and then the non-peak was. Was a seventy percent. Um, occupancy rate, I don't have the exact. Numbers as to availability, I, I have them, just not written here. So that's helpful, right, so it is seventy five percent is probably not, not too far at all. Yeah. I was gonna say, the. Person with the best handle on the numbers, I believe, is Matt Afro, Afro Rapper. He was working for, to show a terminal work group and have their numbers through that date. He has since, I, I believe he's been working, and this is, was called, and so. You know, we're in a rush, but I think he was working on updating those on his own dime privately and, uh. And has, and he has backed into the numbers for Air D N A and for, you know, for, for weeks and. And the tiers and everything, so he has, he has a pretty good handle on this. Is my understanding, and hopefully.
Matt, we, we have a town CFO and he's here giving his presentation right now, I think he also has a handle on this.
Well, he has a different handle, Brian and I have talked about this, he has a different handle, he's not. He can't answer what percentage and what tier and how many of these did this, and you know, there's a different level. And he's not trying to, Brian is doing the job that I want him to do and he needs to do, which is put the most conservative thing out for a budget. There's a difference of, you know, what will happen if this changes and what will happen if that changes? And how, how is this interacted over the past three or five years, you know, you need a different level of detail. That, you know, and you need to look at expenses, so there's different ways, anyway, so I'm not trying to.
I wonder when I might be able to offer perspective in some of this.
I'd like Brian to go ahead and finish, we're really passionate to have him and that he did this, and I'd like him to get through it, and then we can get into this again. So, my purpose for asking the question was, I wanted to understand the flux of that fourteen hundred dollar number. Right, so, like, there's a variable, right, so if there was, if the occupancy rate was five percent higher, then. That number would be a different amount, if it was five percent lower, that number would be a different amount, I was trying to get to, like, what's the.
I think I can put it back in, but I think if memory serves me correctly, and I'll do it, I think a ten percent swing is about three, is about another three hundred thousand dollars. Plus or minus on, on the room tax in the change, roughly.
It makes it pretty robust.
Yeah.
And I, I do that when I, when the, just to give you, to provide that.
Just answered the question, so I'm good.
So, onto the second analysis, which is September through November, which, um. And we chose, I, I'm gonna focus more kind of on the, the non-hosted stage for one second, Madam Chair, but we chose. And to put all of the remaining twenty one days in this period, because. It would be really. I would suggest it might be next to impossible to figure out how somebody's gonna split the twenty one days as a non-hosted stay that they have between. April, May, June, September, October, November into December, and so I. And I know that some people may not agree with me, but I took the. Most logical approach that I thought would make the most sense to be able to come up with an analysis, okay, and I think there's a lot of dynamics that. May make that different, but. If they move their twenty one days into, say, April, then it would just remove some from whatever month that I modeled, so it, it kind of just would shift that around, so. I won't walk everybody through this, the only big change with this really is that the non-hosted stays. According to the way the article is written, would be eligible to rent for all ninety one days. Within that period of time from September for, that I'm using September first to November thirty, okay, they would not have a restriction. Just like they didn't have the restriction in the peak season. Non-hosted stays is where there's gonna be the larger amount of change, and that change, again, as I said, will really occur from September first. Till June fourteenth. I modeled it happening in this quarter because it is the largest quarter, the next largest quarter that we've received. As you walk through that, you'll see that. We expect that non-hosted stays would generate roughly fourteen point seven million dollars in revenue. With a room occupancy tax of about eight hundred and eighty five thousand. And we are projecting that the non-hosted stays, the revenue generated would be fifteen million, which would then create a rental. A short term rental tax payment of nine hundred and forty five thousand. Which is one point eight million dollars in total. And since this quarter hasn't ended yet, we're only, um, halfway through it. We went back to twelve, to the twenty twenty four quarter for the comparison for the revenue, and it was about a one point one million dollar drop. We're projecting conservatively, again, we're trying to build a budget and knowing we have to set a, a balanced budget and a tax rate and trying to work through this. The initial projection is two point five million dollar reduction. Can you go to the next slide, if, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So, I think this is where. Some of the concern in my discussions or my observations to town administration is. These reduction, a reduction in the room occupancy tax has to be made up dollar for dollar in revenue or in other budgetary impacts, okay? There's not a lot of opportunity to make it up within the proposition two and a half levy. Okay. We are allowed by, under the law, to raise the real and personal, the levy on real and personal property taxes annually by two and a half percent, which we historically have already done. The levy limit then is increased. Through new growth, over the last five years, it's been one, about one point seven million dollars. So to make up a two and a half million dollar loss, we have to see a substantial amount of new growth. Above the collective average over the last five years to offset that, and I don't envision a scenario. Where we're gonna see that level of new growth in one year, it would likely take multiple years to get back to. Where, where, where we're projecting. Although the remainder of these projections are really unknown at this time, and we've made an attempt to understand room occupancy. It would be my expectation that there will be some follow on, potential other follow on reductions in revenues. I know last night at the planning board, we had a little bit of a discussion. One would, may draw a correlation that we could see a, a reduction in meals tax. However, we've seen reductions in. The short term rentals, and we still have seen an increase in that corresponding time in meals tax, but it's also. Corresponded with an increase in traditional lodging, so there are other. Revenues in the local estimated receipts, which help offset and lower the tax rate. Um, that could. Be impacted, and as we build towards the budget, we're gonna have to take a stab at trying to understand that, and you know. It'd be really nice if we could have a full impact study, but we have four weeks to get to town meeting or three weeks, and then another two weeks after that for. The budget, so we are working hard to try to understand this. There are some other impacts, uh, that could happen. With the advent of. Collecting the room occupancy tax on short term rentals. It has allowed us to continue. The conservative budgeting that we've been able to do, which has been able to allow us to continue to maintain reserve levels above both. The recommended level from S and P and Moody's, which we've always. Presented to them that those reserve levels allow us to offset. And continue through in a potent, in any type of natural disaster that might occur. That could put a strain on the ability to operate the government or cash flow purposes, so. We, I do believe that with the substantial change in the, the methodology or potential restrictions that our reserves may contract. I don't know to what degree, because a lot of this is unknown. And one of the other things that happens is every time we go to market, we have a ratings call with Moody's. And they, we go through. Everything in financial operations, revenues, expenses, et cetera, et cetera, and one of the questions they ask, is there any. Potential changings coming up that could materially impact the financial health of the island, and. Depending on the outcome, we probably at some point would have to, they do know about everything going on with short term rentals, but. Right now, however. The uncertainty that would happen with Article two would have to lead us to disclose that there could be a long term impact to. The finding, the ability of the island, I know that it would sort itself out for time. But it would be my opinion that it would potentially in the short term, put our triple A credit rating, our bond rating at risk, which would have a, a follow on effect. For currently planned future projects, I know that one of the members, Joe Wright brought up, uh, Island Home. All of those projects would see an increased interest cost along with that, which. Since those. Excuse me, as an example, that project would be financed by a debt exclusion, which is completely out of the levy limit, so additional higher borrowing cost. Automatically translate to a higher position in the tax rate, automatically beaten by the sheer nature of the way a debt exclusion works. So, these are some concerns that we have. Uh, next slide, please, the budget options, now, I've said I don't believe that we would be able to make up all of this revenue on a dollar for dollar basis, so. What is the other option that we have to ensure? Um, financial stability and a balanced budget, which we have to have. It likely is going to need to be some substantial cuts to the services that all of us as residents, businesses and visitors expect when they're here. These impacts will have to be felt by both the town and the school, we cannot. We, the town side alone cannot balance a two and a half million dollar loss, it is not. Possible for us to do it alone, it would have to come with the school. Some of the changes in operations that, you know, could be discussed, impacted a reduction in funding to the island home. Potential reduction in funding to Affordable Housing Trust. A review and a potential reduction, elimination.
Just on the Affordable Housing Trust, given that you have run into the market and raised specific bond issues. That I believe source of repayment is the Affordable Housing Trust funds.
Uh, though all of the ones so far. Are through debt exclusions strictly on the tax levy, this would impact the amount that we transfer annually. That from the override, potentially.
Two million dollars.
This six and a half million dollar override.
So, so they're.
Well, no, but annually, what?
I'll rephrase my question, the, there is. Let's call it. Affordable Housing Trust funding from the town, that would be available to be unfortunately reduced.
Potential.
So it's not all at this point locked up for those bond issues.
Well, right, so this. At a previous town meeting. The annual town meeting authorized a borrowing of approximately forty five million dollars, which has always been anticipated to come from the override that was approved graciously and.
Yeah.
Through by the, the voters. None of that has been borrowed yet. Of that four, no, we are still working on all the previous borrowing authorizations. So, I'm not suggesting that this will definitely, this is just one of the options on the table that would have to be discussed strategically on how to, to fill. Whatever gap we, we did, we think we have to plan for, for the fiscal twenty seven budget. It could be a reduction, potential review of, uh, coastal resiliency projects that get funded through the tax levy. Potential other capital projects through the tax levy could be impacted. Um, we have made a really great concerted effort and bond rating agencies are very thankful that we continue to. Contribute a half a million dollars to O P E B. The Other Post Employment Benefits Trust Fund as a recognition of a long term liability that we're trying to plan for. We may have to suspend, alter, alter that. It could lead. To reduction in staffing levels, either via attrition, elimination of vacant positions. And our reductions in force, quite honestly, with depending on the number that we have to choose and how we can. Kind of strategically plan for the select board initiatives and the initiatives that we're trying to accomplish for the town in town administration. And it certainly. Could have an impact on potential collective bargaining agreements on a go forward basis, I mean, these are all things that could be impacted by this. To what degree, I don't. I'm not sure that we know today, we've presented something that we think it is roughly two and a half million dollars. You know, uh, in November, the town manager and I will have to sit down after town meeting, depending on what happens and come up with a number that we feel comfortable with. In building this, it will have to be somewhat conservative because we do not have the luxury. Of, um, going over and spending into a deficit, if. It's worse than we predict, then we have to find a way to make it up. I certainly hope it isn't as bad as we predict, if it is bad at all, but. These are the challenges that we do face with the proposal as it's set forth in Article two right now.
Okay, okay, can I ask you a couple of questions, one is. I think the school's already facing some cuts, right, whether it's federal grants or state grants, I guess, from, right?
Um, they are facing some challenges, but I don't believe. The last time that I spoke to the school, all of their. Federal fiscal year twenty six grants had been finalized at this point, so. I don't know that we have a clear picture of where they stand with that at this exact moment, but I expect more clarity when we meet with them.
Okay. Um, does anybody?
Oh, and I wanted to, Rob, I, so. No, I'm sorry, so that two point, so I did. Last night at the planning board, this, we did bring this up in part of the discussion about potential impact to follow on revenues, okay? A two point five one five million dollar reduction to room occupancy tax does equate to approximately just under forty two million dollars. Of revenue that that six percent is paid off.
So, I was trying to test the way, a different way, and just make sure I followed your logic, but between the two time periods that you've profiled, it's ninety nine rental days lost. Twenty nine.
Yeah, so all, the way that I did it was took two point five million and, and divide by point oh six, which is the actual.
Yeah.
Tax rate, and it gives you roughly forty one, just under forty two million dollars.
Okay. Revenue lost.
Revenue that would be lost are property owners and, and, and I only make that just so people understand how that two point five, what number is the two point five is to a left front.
Right.
What the ultimate impact, I made no. Guesses on the impact to the, the economy as a whole, and that's not what I'm charged with doing.
And the state lose money too, yeah.
Well, the state would lose money too, but that's their problem.
We get money back from them. They give us grants still. So they have less, they get a lot of money from this island. So, I, I have a question, what, what, why is that, this is probably a question for you, Dave, why? What, how, why, or how did you come up with the twenty one day restriction during September through June, what, what, what's magical to you about that number?
You know. That number was arrived at by multiple people in. It was like horseshit, to be honest with you, right, because. You know, originally, the restriction. Peak period was June fifteenth through September fifteenth. It was, it was a number arrived at based on the hope of disincentivizing investor own. Property, a, and that, that if we restricted, are we talking the twenty one days?
Twenty one days.
In the end, well, it, that came to just out of the map. Of the seven weeks. Right?
But it seems.
So it, it originated from seventy days minus the seven weeks.
Yeah, but maybe, are you thinking like, why did you put a restriction in the summer, like if you had an overall restriction, is that? I mean, it doesn't seem to me to make sense to restrict non-hosted stays September through June, right, that makes no sense to me.
Um, November.
Yes, yeah, yes.
It does, if what you're trying to accomplish is to scramble the math for investor own. So, so. There was, there was, uh, there was a great desire amongst. The people that. That helped create this article to, to really address that. And focus on, on, a, and I'm not saying there's a, a lot of them. But I'm saying that these people felt strongly about that. Do we know at this juncture, how many there are?
Jeremy, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, no, you go ahead, I just wanna identify.
Have we learned in the last few years, because I know this. Uh, institutional ownership is always bandied about. But do we actually know, do we have an order of magnitude of how many homes actually are owned by institutional, given today's market prices and market rents? And you might be able to say, I think the easiest way to, to identify those properties is, is probably looking at the number of nights rented. Right, a, and. There aren't a lot of properties that rent over a hundred nights. There isn't really a ton of properties that rent over seventy. Days in a year.
So are you saying we don't really have an institutional investor problem?
Um, I'm saying that they exist and they're, they're a problem for many. They're not, yeah, they're a problem for neighborhoods.
That rent too much.
That, that are, are, that churn.
Right, I hear you on the train.
Yeah, a, and I think that that's what this was trying to address, the churn and the disruption.
Uh, so go ahead Penny. I think the committee's gonna have more questions and so this is we're really getting into it.
Yeah.
Please weigh in.
Yeah, unfortunately I have a, I have to be out of here in ten minutes, but I'm just gonna say that, um, people keep forgetting that we have. Rules in place now against corporate or R E I T ownership. And um, those are in place and we have mechanisms for reporting. And as I said earlier, there were five complaints this summer. Two of which were to just check on whether somebody was registered. So the number of houses that we would say are institutional renting, it's de minimis. It's very de minimis. The irony is the Copley Group, when they chose to sell their twelve houses. I don't know how many people who bought those are still renting, but what problem did that solve? I mean, those were well run, they were over the top of their site. Very few complaints that I was aware of.
Think they had a contributed community impact to me too, yeah.
That's right, they would, would not this year. So I, if I had to guess, I'd say that the properties that are strictly rented, never occupied by an owner. Are probably less than ten on assignment.
Out of twelve thousand.
Of twelve thousand seven hundred.
Twelve hundred, twelve, thirteen hundred and fifty.
Okay, hold on.
I do want to make just one other observation. Th- this calculation did not take into account. The recent adoption of the three percent community impact rate, which.
Yeah.
Article two would potentially diminish or change. That, the ability for that, and we have collected about, I think. The last quarter, I think it was a couple, two hundred and fifty thousand. Don't quote me to that, cause I don't remember the exact number. I think it, two sixty eight, I think is what it was, but over the course, I think it is three hundred and fifty since we implemented. Um, I was gonna make it, but. We also have to remember that it's thirty five percent of that is going into a special purpose stabilization fund, so the general fund is not receiving full value of that. So we didn't, that has been excluded from this, but we expect that. It would have an impact on that, the community impact fee.
Well, I think that was a huge, like, that's a real variable. I mean, we don't, there's no consistency on community impact fee yet. That's still really new, right? We're all on the same page on that, I would think.
Could I please make just one more comment before I have to leave? Thank you. I'm concerned if. Rentals are not legalized in our zoning by law. That somebody is gonna question the ability of the Commonwealth and the town to tax and regulate them. Okay, that's it. I'm not asking for an answer, I just.
Okay.
So can I just have a minute?
Yes, of course. I just wanna say one thing about Brian's.
Yeah.
Just so we can, like, we can keep talking about it, but. Just to summarize the way I think I'm hearing you all say too, it, this is a static analysis. This is not dynamic analysis. We know that. You have to base it off history and then it's a responsible conservative thing to do. And I also hear Matt's point about wanting to have more analysis on more things. Um, and to do really fully dynamic analysis on GDP. Um, and that was not available to us because this special time meeting got rushed, so I think that's kind of. Why we're focused on what we think is, I really think the most honest numbers that.
Yeah, we did hear one impact, not GDP, but forty two million dollar hit to income to property owners.
Right. But I'm just saying, none of that is reflecting meals and.
Right.
Spending money here. I mean, we, we can go on and on about short, shorter term stays, spending more money, using fewer cars. I mean, we can all interpret all that. We, we, we've talked about a lot of that and you all talked about last night a lot.
I'll talk about it a little more to me.
Okay.
I.
What do you, Jeremy?
One quick question before you respond.
Yeah.
Um, enforcement.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the complexity of what Brian has just done on creating a static possibility is great, but. This is rather complex. And we can't even in this town enforce things like leak blowers. There's, and so I'm wondering violation, and so I'm wondering how are you going to enforce all this stuff?
Well, can I, can I make a comment about that too? Cause I do want you to address it.
Yeah.
It's super important to me. I have like four pages right now about it. That we have the noise laws, for example, and I asked the chief of police, you know, if she could give me the data on the, the noise. Um, the call is the something, and she did. And I said, well, how many of these resulted in an actual violation, like? Where you find somebody and she said, oh, zero. And I said, oh, huh, we, I said, have you? Over time, like, how many, how many times have you actually issued a fine for a noise violation? She's like, never.
And on that point, because the health department has taken it on. And I, I, I think the, the gardeners around me cause nuts and make me go nuts. And so I had gone through her a whole bunch and learned the system. And you go through the health department and John, I can't remember his last name, is the guy. And you take a video and you send him the stuff and you send him an email. And so I asked him this year in the last three years, how many given one? Three hundred dollar fine, that's it. So there is no enforcement. So what, and I say that just off of leak blowers and noise violations. So now we come to this thing, which can be very complicated. And are we going to rely on the federal administration, Department of Justice to nail people for uh, banking, uh, you know. Violate, violations because they filled out the wrong form or whatever it is. I, I just, anyway, I'm sorry.
It, yeah.
It, it needs to be addressed.
It does need enforcement, complaint based, just like noise, and I think that you should address if you thought about that and talked about that and how you all considered.
Need to understand, so. So when, when I first kind of started down this path after the select board. Up to date for me. Um. You know, I, I met with a bunch of stakeholders. One of them was, was charity bands, um, and she looked at me and, and I thought her argument was very reasonable, um. She said, listen, Dave, I can get behind any number of things if you can show me that. That enforcement is real and taking place. Um, so. I went and sat down with, with Rocky and, and talked to him about the registration process, what that looked like, the number of. Registrations we had, the number of actually advertised properties that existed. There was a delta there and, and I, and I kind of talked through that with him, trying to understand why we had, you know. About fifteen hundred and only thirteen fifty registered. And, and he, his response was those are the two weak people. So, um, I accepted that. Um, he informed me about the five complaints. Um. He informed me that, that at the registration level, there were. A few that, that may be out there that haven't registered, um. And that there's a problem with the platforms not showing the Nantucket registration number. So, um. We addressed all, pretty much all of those things, um. The platforms now have agreed to put in the Nantucket registration number in all their ads. So it'll be much easier to track how many rentals we actually have. And who's doing what. Um, when it comes to, to noise complaints, I think there's, there's certainly work to be done. I, I, I'm not saying that. That it's perfect. Um, currently how? The complaint system works is there's an eight hundred number. I, I think that there can be work to be done to get that. Eight hundred number more widely distributed. So that the complaints go to one place. So we don't have someone calling a noise complaint into the police department. When really it should be going to the complaint line and then something goes to the police department from there.
Away from noise, there is no way, well, I'm not aware of that. But away from noise.
There is an eight hundred number, but no, I, and I'm getting to the day, to the days, okay?
There's a number to call for the short term, just register if you're concerned about a short term.
Right, there's a complaint number. Yes, there's a complaint number. So, so I, I think people have this. This idea in their mind. That. And, and let me say first off, people are already prowling through the bushes. Who are you kidding, right? That like, I've seen pictures from, from. Residents sent to town of boxes stacked up outside of a house saying, look, this is a short term rental. This is all their paper product. So this is already happening. Don't, don't, don't pretend it's not, and it's unfortunate and, and I don't agree with it. But the idea of regulations and it goes with many regulations we have in this town and, and state and country. That they are tools to deal with problematic actions by people. Right? So if there is that property that gets called one or two times. Those rules that we put into place will be used. To come down on that. In whatever way is appropriate to resolve the issue. So I, I think that it's not an active police report and yes, it, it does count on people reporting. The actions. And it's not a perfect system yet, but we're working on tightening it up. I think that as far as dates, as far as dates rented, you attest to it when you, when you. Register your house, you attest an illegal attestation that I rented this much on these dates the previous year. If it becomes a problem that they seem like they're renting too much. Then that will be used against them. And they will be either fined, they'll lose their right to rent, there's a number of tools with. Two, we have two ways now. We can, we can use zoning for enforcement, which I've argued in the past and still argue is not an ideal way to enforce anything. And we also now have the general bylaw to do that into, which is a much more robust way. So.
But David, if you believe that zoning should not be in doing enforcement, then why did you put a general Bible on the zoning Bible?
So let's get, let me, let me, let me begin and we'll get there, okay? Because I think that's, that's a really honest, no, it's a very reasonable question.
I think it's just, I'm a basic.
It's a very reasonable question.
Things like a voter and it's unprecedented.
So let me go through my little spiel and then we'll, we'll, we'll get there. So, so. This process for me has been really dis- disheartening, to be honest, with all of you. Um, the intention of what I. Have done. Was to give voice. And options. To, to a, a large part of our community. Are they fifty percent, sixty percent? Probably not, but they could be fifty or forty percent. Give them a voice and a vote at town meeting for something they could support. And that's it simply, nothing more than that. So any. Anyone that says this is for rich people that don't work, that don't derive an income from this community. Is wholly wrong. For anyone to say that this is driven by Peter McCoslin is wholly wrong. And, and it really is bothersome to me. So, uh, and I'm not gonna say anything more than that. Um. I'm gonna go first to the, to the finance piece of it and, and I'm not gonna dig in too deep, I think, um. It's important to understand and, and I, and I truly appreciate Brian's report. I, I think that he has done his job. I think I don't necessarily agree with his numbers. Um, but I, I think that he is, he has done masterful work in a short period of time. Um. From my perspective and, and sitting with Matt Hafenraffer. Um. I think that, and, and I've always said there is gonna be an impact. There's no question. And, and I think that one has its impacts too, but for two. The impact we're looking at is, is probably more than a million, but less than two. And, and as, as Brian has stated, it's really hard to put your finger on it for multiple reasons. Um, I, I think one of the bigger reasons is how the market will react, right? Um, I, I think that we're already seeing. We have a November deadline for registrations and, and I, I would be surprised if we had. If we didn't have close to two thousand this year, which is. A pretty big gate. And I think part of that is because we're forcing the, the, um. The platforms now to show the registration number and I, so I think that's gonna pick up a lot of people that haven't registered in the past. Um, so I, I think that that's an important part to remember. I also think that any discussion on. Impact to GDP related things. Is impossible to have unless we have a full understanding. Of rental nights available and how they are used, right? So we go back to the seventy four thousand rental nights that were used during prime time of last year. And ninety available. What happens to those extra twenty that weren't used, right? Where will they be spread out? Where will they be used again? Will, will they be? So that in part goes back to your twenty one days. Um, I, I think that everybody uses their property different and rents it differently. So to put. The rental business into a linear equation like Brian has, but Brian has no choice. That's how he has to do it, so I get it. I, I think does not really give us an accurate picture of, of. Of what will happen. And I, I'm not saying there's not a cost. But my argument is, is the cost is far less than, than what many people. It, it seems to be this really dramatic. Representation of, of this is gonna burn the house down and, and I don't believe it is. Um. As far as, as. The quandary in zoning. Um, you guys have all heard me argue for six years. Codify, regulate the general bylaw, codify, regulate the general bylaw, six years. What's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Um. So the biggest pushback all along has been, we need to have. A regulation in zoning to make us feel safe to vote for certification. So that's where the seventy days came from. My idea.
Repeat that please, just so everyone knows, cause everyone does keep asking the seventy day question.
Seventy day limit. For a calendar year that you can rent.
Yeah, I know, but about why you got to seven.
Okay, well, why I picked seventy days. Was because a lot of people wanted one hundred and a lot of people wanted fifty. And in talking to people. Um, found a lot, a, a pretty common theme. I need ten weeks. I need ten weeks and then it doesn't matter.
You're talking to people who rent?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, so I have seventy day. Um, so as this negotiation process happened. Um, because even though Penny will refer to it as a capitulation article, it wasn't. It was a. Bunch of people sitting around and it wasn't pleasant often. I think that Matt decided he wasn't gonna talk to me about ten times in this process. Um, and I fought desperately to keep as much out of zoning as I could possibly do. Um, in the end. I made the decision. That putting the additional restriction in zoning. My opinion. And, and when I say the additional.
Not all of it.
The additional, the seven, seven. I told you why I put the seventy days in.
Yeah, no, I know, but all of it's in so.
Uh, and, and I'm getting there and I'm telling you why. Um. That was a decision I made. To reduce. The prime season that many people at the table were asking for from June fifteenth to September fifteen. And I thought it was more valuable to this town to reduce that to August thirty first. In exchange for putting the seven, seven into zone. I think as we have that zoning talk. It's something that nobody in Article One has discussed. That when you vote yes for Article One, you are giving. At this point, thirteen hundred and fifty one properties a protected status for life. So if you ever wanna regulate. Short term rentals and zoning in any way, you will have created a protective status for a number of properties on this island. That will never go away. It will affect their property values. The guy next to this guy, his house is worth thirty percent more than this guy. And why? Because we in perpetuity have protected that use. So. There is a danger in, in, in all of this and, and we, we can't deny that. Um.
But that doesn't mean we can't restrict it.
Well, oh yeah, you can't, once you're protected, you can't restrict it.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean you can't have restrictions on short term rental.
You give somebody protective status, you cannot restrict it.
Dave, I, I.
So I'm saying, look, what I'm saying, this is what I'm saying.
John's raising his hand.
Yeah, this is what. Yeah, this is what I'm saying. Okay, I'll let John do it. Okay, i- if, if, if we tomorrow, if we pass one. And then the very next town meeting, we decide. That we are gonna say, well, you don't have that right anymore, you're, you're restricted to seventy days now. Every.
Introduce one.
Every single one of those hundred and thirty-five or thirteen-hundred-and-fifty properties. Would not have to abide by that.
No, John did. If, if I may.
Yes. In zoning, we're talking about.
I would never suggest the chair of the planning board is wrong, however.
Well, I'm often wrong, John, so.
Often an error, never in doubt, right? Um, I, I just wanted to point out something because Dave is raising. You know, something that is pretty much black letter law for purposes of zoning, however. When you read either Article One or Article Two. It is clear that in order to. It operate as, um, as either a primary use or an accessory use. You must be in compliance with the general bylaw. So even though you might have protected use under zoning. The only, you only have that protected use if you're in compliance with. Chapter one, uh, with, with, um, the general bylaw. And the general bylaw has no grandfathering, excuse me, I wasn't gonna say that word, has no protected status. Okay, it applies across the board to everybody. It's not a zoning issue, it's a general bylaw.
A- and I agree, John, but I'm saying if there's a change made and that phrase isn't in compliance anymore. Then they wouldn't have to abide by that change if they were you.
Yeah, if, if, if a general bylaw in the future was enacted that took away. The existing restrictions, okay, then, um, then the, um. You know, it, the protected status under zoning would be different. By the same token, if more restrictions are placed in the general bylaw in the future, they're gonna apply to. Everybody without regard to any protected use status.
Yep. So.
What, no, what he's, no, that.
Well, so you can regulate them away, but in a general bylaw that. Is a- and, and hence the reason why I think nothing has passed is because people. Have a real discomfort. I'm not saying I do, but people have a very real discomfort. In regulating solely by general bylaw. For the simple fact that it is changed by a simple majority. And I believe that that knife cuts both ways, but there's a large part of our population that doesn't. And again, what I said is I'm bringing forward an article to give people a voice. To give people options that, that want to see this as. As, as, um, as more secure regulations than a general bylaw, I think is fair to say.
You mean for changing it? And for enforcement?
Yes.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
The one other thing I wanna point out is, um. If your restrictions are in a general bylaw, which they currently are. The town has been, has a very significant enforcement tool. And that is the assessment of a civil penalty of fi- up to five thousand dollars per violation per day. So for example, if someone does not register their property. Every day that they're, let's just say it's however many days. Let's say it's seventy days and they're operating without a registration certificate, that's potentially five thousand times seventy. Which is not available under zoning. So I don't want anyone to think that having these restrictions in the. Uh, act, well, I, I think having the restrictions in the general bylaw as well as the zoning bylaw. Gives the town a lot more enforcement options, one of which. Is very powerful in my opinion, because that becomes quickly a significant economic disincentive. To not comply with the general bylaw.
I know, but we already have it in the general bylaws, what you're saying.
Yes, it is, it's in the general.
I'm confused about what we're not enforcing now.
Well, let's, I'm just saying we have this ability to use this tool now to find people, we can do it now. People, and people voted for that.
People.
In a general bylaw.
People want more robust guardrails. Uh, that's all I can say, I, I'm not, I'm just telling you what I know from everyone I've met. And I think many of your members feel that way, they feel this has maybe gone too far. But, but there is a large percentage of our population that want more regulations than exist and there's no. You can't argue that, it's reality.
Dave, I, I want them to enforce, you know, the helmet rule on E-bike too. But you know, I don't have to have it in zoning to do it, you know, I just gotta have.
I'm not saying it's the best way to do it.
The best practices and I personally think, and I'm sorry I get a little upset because I really believe in community connection. That's why I'm friends with you, that's why I'm friends with most everyone in this room who I know. And I worry, I really do about the community division. And this complaint base issue bothers me because I feel like you have, and, and I know people are doing.
It's not gonna go away with your, with Article One, it's not gonna go away.
It's like you're endorsing it, that's what I don't like, that you're saying, hey, it's okay to go and tell on your neighbor, I just.
I would push back on you to say that I, I am far from endorsing it. I am bringing forward an article to help quell it and give everyone an option to vote how they feel. Just because you don't agree with it, doesn't mean it's a viable, it's not a viable option.
I'm not saying it's not, but then that's a whole different discussion about putting forward a policy that you think can pass rather than putting forward a policy that is good public policy for the island.
If a policy doesn't pass, it's not, it's not a policy, right? So no, we might want, we might want.
I agree with that.
We, we might want, a- and everyone wants this island to turn back to nineteen seventy-three, well, guess what? It's not gonna, a- and, and. I, I, I don't mean to be combative, argumentative at all, but I think. What I'm trying to say is there's a large number of people in this community that want to have a voice at this town meeting. That want something different than what Article One is giving them, and I have brought that forward.
I'm gonna ask Jeremy first, wait a minute.
I just wanna let you, I just wanna make sure she knew Charity, that's all.
I didn't see. I might have to bring in a third.
I, I have.
I think that's a good idea, actually, Jeremy.
I have a question, yeah, for you. Okay, um, tonight, I go to a, a potential dinner party and everybody says, okay, what's, what's going on? Now, my hair hurts trying to understand.
Mine does too.
Okay, so. And I think I would say, but I wanna be corrected, Article One endeavors to create a legal problem. Article. Resolve, uh, I'm sorry, to resolve, it's very, very. Article Two, your article, is a compromise of many competing voices. And it seeks to. Put oil on the troubled waters to, um, remove. Let's call it a chaos and traffic and other churn problems. And it's, okay, this is where I'm having trouble, is to succinctly say. Why are we really here with the second article? So that I can sit there and I can talk to people. Very cogently and say, this is why we're here. I believe what I'm hearing is it's a compromise. It seeks to calm a lot of the churn on the island down. And it seeks to do a few other things, but I'm. I'm sorry if I'm being obtuse on this, but I would like to.
But it's a fair question, I, I think that it, um. It seeks to resolve our legal problem because it will.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I think that the best way, the best. Analysis I can put forward and I think Matt corrected me once on this, but I'm gonna say it and he can correct me again. Is that it looks to take a full boil down to a simmer. And that's it.
Okay, but.
Um, I, I believe we're not, we're not gonna solve the housing problem through any policy we create in, in short-term rentals.
Counterargument that I would be asked.
Yeah.
Is no good crisis ever goes unused by many others. And so we have, people are gonna say this is a crisis that came to pass for whatever reason. But we have the affordable housing or lack of employee housing issue, they're jumped on the bandwagon here. We have the people who say there's too much traffic and other things, they jumped on the bandwagon here. And so. I, I always get back to problem definition. And the problem, one of the challenges is, this is an amalgamation of many things that came together. That could be construed as a conflict arose and every group jumped upon it. And I'm trying to, I would love to have a very pithy understanding of what this seeks to fix. Other than it's just oil on the troubled waters.
It, it seeks to resolve our legal issue. It, it seeks to give a large body of. Our residents and voters. An option that they think. Is what, is, is what they want based on what I, I mean, listen.
They can support.
That they can support a- and, and no, there's no regulation that's gonna resolve any of these issues. Because these issues although may be affected by short-term rentals, weren't created by short-term rentals. And no policy is gonna resolve them, okay? But these people that want to resolve our legal issue. But aren't comfortable with full codification deserve an article that they feel comfortable. Resolving that legal issue with.
Okay, so, well, one of the things I struggle and at the moment trying to be able to explain succinctly.
Yeah.
Is how this article, but ma- many people may wish to have short-term rental constraints, okay? But. On a good public policy perspective, I'm trying, I'm struggling to understand what problems this solves. This, not, not just, you know, fifty-one percent or sixty-seven percent of the voters may want this. And maybe they don't know how to articulate why they want it. I'm trying to ask why, what does this solve on a public policy?
Well, it, it, what it, it does is those restrictions are a vehicle to help these people be comfortable. With legalizing short-term rental.
What, do you, you want me to translate that for you?
Was that, I mean, it, it, does that make sense?
What, no, I know, I just me, I just meant I was gonna put it in layman's terms, that I think what you're saying is. You tell her wrong.
Yeah.
That you think that people, it is, it is a codification, accessory use is a codification. And I think what you're saying that, that if one fails, maybe some people are willing to accept two, right? I mean, they.
I, 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 I would hope, I would hope, listen, my greatest hope. Is that this is resolved at this town meeting. I mean, that, that, that is my greatest hope a- and, and I will celebrate that, right? And, and, and I won't celebrate. I won't celebrate it to the detriment of whoever is on the other side, I will celebrate it for us as a community that we can move on. Um, and, and again, the, the purpose the regulations serve. Is to make legalization palatable for them.
And another way, I, I, I do understand, but another way of explaining this is. This article is effectively a compromise to put this divisive issue behind everyone, however.
Comes with a price.
Disassembling it to say what does it actually do as opposed to just moving this issue behind us. On a positive public policy basis, you have a myriad of people with different perspectives. And you have some people who say it'll improve, uh, affordable housing, some people say it'll include. Uh, uh, employee housing, it'll reduce traffic. Each of the, what, whatever they may, issues may be. I guess I, I know that I would be asked, or will be asked. Well, wait a second, let's delve into each of these things, this doesn't seem like this makes any sense. Now, other people who brought this issue to, to them, it may make sense. I'm just telling you, I'm gonna have a hard time defining the disassembled problem to others.
And, and I, and I understand that, and, and I think the best representation is the one I made. Is that these regulations is what it takes to make up a. A s- large group of our community comfortable with legalizing SDR.
And, and surely one of the side effects of that is gonna be that if. You are right, Chairman. And this article doesn't achieve the goals that people set forward to do it, in other words, it doesn't solve this affordable housing issue. It doesn't so- solve workplace housing issues, they then are probably prepared to move further. In the way of liberalization.
And, and you've never heard me.
When Matt said, that's one of my big concerns, if you let this go all at once. And things get worse, it could be held.
You've never heard me say once that it is gonna resolve any of those issues. I, I think that both of the articles before you all, before us, resolve our legal issue, right? Then the discussion comes down to. Are people comfortable with full codification with, with the regulations we have in place? Or are people comfortable with more regulations? A lot of people on this board and other people think that it is way too much. There are some other people in this room that are in the real estate business, I think they're still in this room. That say, hey, this is not that big of a deal, to be honest with you. So I, I think that we. We, it, listen, this is gonna come down to the community and, and as hard as you all have worked on, on. On your recommendations and your motions and as hard as we battled out our motions last night. I gotta be honest with you, when it gets to town meeting floor, none of that's gonna matter.
Right.
No, man, we've all seen, we've all seen them ignore our recommendations. I have, I have fought hard for full codification for many years and gave it, you know, and, and worked hard to, to get it. To, for, um, a positive recommendation at town meeting floor to see it blow up. So I, I think really that this is gonna come down to the community, the emotion in the room. And the choices that they've been given, and I still stand that Article Two. Gives many people in this community a choice that they've been looking for.
What you're, what I'm try, what I am hearing you say is that you would prefer to do it through zoning rather than a general bylaw. No. Because part of what you've said is that if.
I'm saying that there's many in this community that prefer to do it through zoning.
But you are, this article.
And that's what this article represents. Yeah, yeah.
Right, I mean, and I'm, I mean, I'm gonna go back to the twenty-one day thing because I think it's one of the barriers for entry, right?
Again, I, and, and I think that. I think that, um. It'll be interesting, I mean, listen, people can amend that on town meeting floor, um, a- and, and I hope that. You know, that, that maybe there'll be some deal making before that a- and, and maybe that will change, I don't know, to be honest with you. But, but this is, the, what's before you is what was fought hard to get. In agreement with a large number of people, it was not an easy process, um, and.
Charge is this fiscal responsibility.
But I think you have to remember again, we need to go back to amount of rental nights available. And how are they used, right? Because you can say, okay, you just cut thirty percent of the nights available with your, with your. Twenty-seven or your seven-seven, which, which is true for that time period. But based on how those rental nights are used and what's left over, there could be far more than twenty-one days available. In the off-season, right? I mean, some people use their houses more in the summer and rent them more in the off-season. Um, a- and, and again, like, like Brian has said, could, maybe, should. We're, that's where we all are because it's really hard to put our finger. But I also believe that there is gonna be and, and, um, Stephen Maury.
He's not here.
Um, suggested that this will create more rentals. And.
Heard this too.
A- and I think it will, and, and.
More people.
This was brought up. This was brought up, actually Stephen Maury and myself sat with some stakeholders and discussed this. And Stephen Maury turned straight to them and said, you know that this is gonna create more. And the stakeholder's position was, we don't mind more. We rather have separate properties doing more business. Than those two properties in the neighborhood just blowing up all day long. So, it was a choice to spread the business out. I- i- it's, and again, it's a possibility. Will it happen? Who knows, because who knows what the market's gonna do, but I would argue that if a vacuum's created, the market will move to fill it at some level.
Okay, well, I don't know Steve Maury wants to respond to his private meeting with you or not, but in the meantime.
No, I mean, he doesn't, I mean, I. He's inaccurate.
Mister Hurley, did you have?
Yeah, I, we're, we're going over ground multiple times here, it's almost like they're trying to be drilled into us. And I, I presented last night, and uh, I just wanna, before I start this thing. The one thing that's come out of this whole S T R business, which I think is very painful. Uh, but what is positive is, like Hurley, he has learned about, a lot about the people in this town, and sat down a lot with Dave. Took the time to sit down with Matt, Malcolm, and I, I can't believe Tom Dixon, what a gem, you know, and Ock. So, you're all doing a great job, I wish every middle schooler in the country could spend time in these meetings. So we'd have a better country. So, that's off commercial. Uh, I made a, a request last night to talk about a, a, part of the Article Two. Uh, which uh, addresses uh, two dwellings on a single block. And I wanna stick with that, I'm gonna try and keep it to the financial side of things. But when I brought it up last night and I requested that it be discussed, it. We went on to the next speaker and didn't get to it, and I don't blame Dave for that, because there's so many people speaking, but. You know, uh, this is very threatening to the Hurley's. Uh, it's not the only thing that Hurley's think about. Because uh, we've been coming here, I've been coming here for seventy years, the family just celebrated fifty years together. Uh, every year consecutively, even though they lived all over the world, it's a very important place to us. Uh, we have two dwellings on our property, but we also have a son who lives in a, a more. Dense neighborhood right here by the high school. And we're concerned about some of the other, uh, I don't like the word guardrails, but limitations or regulations. The guardrails in this are the size of a cliff in some, in some instances. However. We rented for twenty years here on uh, on uh. Single lots with multiple dwellings. There've been two dwellings allowed in properties forever. We set our sights years ago, bought property in nineteen eighty. Spent nineteen years paying it off, built for twenty-five years, have rented responsibly, uh, those two dwellings. These words at the end of the uh, the bylaw section, and the, also in the zoning law. Which you all received copies of, et cetera, basically have. Our income levels. So we're gonna go find seventy-five thousand dollars a year for, this just, those words are left there untouched. Now, I understand why they're put there, and I think uh, it was interesting in the last comments. Shared between Emily Mold and myself last night. She said, oh, we never meant to hurt people, she liked the Hurley's, right? We're really trying to make it look like a bad deal for anybody to come in and just start an S T R factory. In one of these houses with a, you know, many hotels on set before, so. That's what Matt's concerned about, uh, so Malcolm's concerned about last week. I think Dave, Chris ends up pretty well too. Well. Don't kill us. You're, we're already paying forty-five hundred dollars, we have to pay forty-five hundred dollars a year in the community impact fee. Yeah, we have to get another registration for two hundred and fifty dollars. We contribute almost as much in uh, generating uh, income for the town. As you're paying property taxes, so we're, we're, we're a piece of the community that's, that is contributing here. Uh, but. But don't jeopardize our ability to stay here after fifty years. Now, I don't know how many of these there are, and no one can tell me. How many people are like myself, but there's gonna be at least fifty or a hundred of us. Add another three hundred thousand to your analysis, Brian, or five hundred thousand.
I think that's like a fair point, I, I know you can't write that down.
I don't, we don't, I don't have any way to know how many.
With all due deference, I don't think your analysis is the driver of this discussion. But, but it's important that we have it as a tool to.
Well, I think one of the things I'm hearing from you, Mister Hurley, is that we're, I mean. We're seeing you and our people here calling you an institutional investor, right? Um, and I think that's really kinda where the debate.
You could take it that way, Joe, I, I agree with you.
I think that's really what the people that you're talking to, Dave, I think that's how they do that, I mean, he has more than two.
Me and Mister Hurley have spent a lot of time talking. He knows it brings no joy to me at all, but I.
I don't wanna be, be legislated off of this island. I don't wanna be gentrified away, you know, but eh. I think there's a solution to this, it's not ideal. I think if you preplu existing ownership in this situation. With a phrase in that sentence, you can still protect the future. Of course, you jeopardize what our children might be able to do, or other young people coming to the island when you talk about the future. But I think you owe it to us, as longstanding, multi-generational citizens. Why we built two places? Well, we hoped to have a bunch of kids, and we had a bunch of kids. We were, there were two of us when we started, and then we were five for twenty years, now they're seventeen. There's a couple of good girlfriends hanging around who might be thinking. This is life, you know, and, and when you do that, that paragraph, it's like. Pardon me, Matt, it's like telling Matt, you know, okay, Matt, you have a wonderful business, I know you started with a Nantucket Shuffle and all that kinda stuff. And you've just done great and terrific, but. You can make all the bread you want, but no sandwiches. Half your business fell away.
Sandwiches, that's a good idea.
Or make the sandwiches, no, the sandwiches cost too much trouble. And we're out in the middle of the country there, we're, we're, we wave to you when you go out and walk the swamp pond. We're three acres, we're not troubling anybody. Why are you treating us this way? You're designers of Article Two.
Well, Dave, I actually do have a question about that, did you all look at uh, trying to restrict it in certain zones? Like, I, I don't know if you can, so I'm not.
That was the original um, draft one, and um. It went away. For, for numerous reasons, eh, um, the biggest one was, was complexity. Um, unfortunately, like again, I, I take no joy in this at all. It, it's, it's horrible and it's real, and I, I, again, you know, it's. People unfortunately get hurt in these things, and, and. I don't want it to be the Hurley's, and, and maybe, and, and hopefully, and Mister Hurley will tell you exactly what I said to him. I said, your best option is to support Article One. And if that fails, your best option is try to amend it on town meeting floor. For me, unfortunately, as I've said multiple times, that any shift. In this is gonna make it crumble. And. Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I mean. Well, it's real, and, and I, and it's.
I do intend to sit down with my Emily and come and see you again before November.
And please do, you know.
No, you've always been awesome.
They're gonna save the turtles together.
Everybody, you guys are good guys, but, but everybody here has. Honest. Reasonable intentions. You know, we all love the place, and uh, if you don't, I'm trying to take that down, but here's one instance. We don't know how many of it, how much of it is, exists. But fifty or a hundred have, thirteen hundred is a reasonable thing to play with, you know, you could, two hundred, I don't know. Uh, it's been a total, a two-dwelling island for a long time.
Well, I do think that people, if they have built, they have. Land financially. When they've invested here. And I do think that it's hard to come back and say we're gonna not just restrict. Severely restrict something that you were counting on. And I'm not saying that you can't restrict at all ever in the future, please don't misunderstand me, I. I just felt strongly about it being a general bylaw, because that's what you taught me. It is, that's why you trained me, I mean, that's how I learned, and it. But I think it, it, it's a tough pill to swallow for the people who are existing, and I, 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 you don't need to hear from me.
No, it is, but you have to remember, it's, it's a helping pill, one is a tough pill for many people to swallow, and that's, and that's why I brought this in.
Okay, Caroline?
Caroline Balzer, um, I'm a member of the, the, the town council spending committee. I don't know, we worked for two years to look at the different forms of governance. I am wondering right now, um, the, uh, the chair of the planning board is referring to. It, I think he's saying is his motivations are to represent a group of people. Who would not otherwise be represented. Um, I'm sorry if I'm getting that wrong, but that you're trying to give voice to a group of people. Who would not find Article One palatable. Article One uh, just came about a couple of weeks ago, when we all put it in there, and Brian Burrisson is sponsoring it. So I, I don't, I think you were working on it for also a very long time. Um, I know I was not involved in any of those conversations. About something else, Dave.
But, but yeah, whatever.
About my, not whatever.
I don't, I don't mean that whatever.
I'd like to say what is important, as I'm trying to say now. I feel that the citizens that you're trying hard to give a voice to. Um, I mean, that's a good thing, it's not a bad thing, but I think in this form of governance that we have, an open town meeting. My question is, why aren't those citizens coming forth as we did? Um, and, and bringing forth the citizens petition, or bringing forth the citizens article to join our citizens petition in special town meeting. Why did, why is the chair of the planning board doing it for them? Because I think it gives them a leg up. And what I just heard Mike Hurley say to you is, you know, I might like to come talk with you too. Um, what I'd really like to get across in these comments right now, um, as the former sponsor of Article Sixty-Six. Is I have heard from so many people in the last four years on this island. And I will not give you all the different individual stories, but so many of them. People are too scared to talk, people are too scared to write down how many days they rented. Last year when they do their registration, because they have the belief that someone might use that information. To diminish them, or to come after them lawsuit, whatever. And I just want to get that across, because I too feel like I'm representing a lot of people who don't feel like they have a voice. Nor would they even feel safe enough to come talk to you, Jay.
But just to concern, Dave has always answered my thoughts.
Yeah, I have met with many, many people. And, and, yes, I am, I guess I'm. So, but first of all, I think you need to understand that the select board, and Matt will back me up on this, says. This is only, the planning board should deal with it, we, we would like, we would like to come up with a compromise article.
Okay, we get, we get it.
And that's, and that's how, that's how it began.
Mister Georgiou, can you run away in?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, so being mindful of. The fact that you've had this public hearing now for coming on three hours. And the deadline of this afternoon to get um, the warrant booklet to the publisher. Can I respectfully suggest that you just ask any members of the public who have not spoken and wish to speak? To make their remarks, make them briefly, and then I would close the public hearing and proceed to a vote on our.
Okay, well, that still might take some time, because we do have some other members of the public who wanna keep speaking. Um, did you, Charity, did you want to?
I just wanted to make some comments about the projection of. Before I did, and we understand, I, I'm a data dog, I'm a deviance for many, many of us. More credible, most supportive, um, and. Just a few points, Penny Dye, who's last year now. On the floor, I don't know how many town meetings, has said there are two thousand short-term rentals on that fund it. Some of you may remember that quote.
I think that was based on the state data, wasn't it? The state registrations, it was like twenty-two hundred, if I remember correctly.
The pro, what you have here is a situation, thirteen hundred and fifty-one. That number is probably a little premature, or probably quite low. And I, so when you're listening to these numbers, that's a draconian. Sort of projection was being made. Um, there are, when we did our review this winter, there are two thousand and seventy-three. Property, individual properties listed by nine major realtors on this island. It doesn't include, I think somebody estimated that there are thirty-three realtors on this island. So, or have representation here. So there, just, that's a very rough proxy for what. Um, Penny's saying, because she's very much involved in it, so that's very close.
Will people list more than one brother?
Yes. So these are, these are individual properties, stripping out the multiple listings. Okay, because you'll have some properties that have four or five realtors.
Which also have some property.
But this is just the individual uh, properties. Taken from the residential property list. And just moved up into a list of realtor listings, okay? So it's just, it's a residential property, it's listed one, two, three, four times, that's not the point. But this morning in checking air DNA. For Airbnb and B R B O, there are twelve hundred and fifty-four Nantucket listing. How many do you think of those are registered? Very few. So what's, what we have here is a moving target. Trying to get data, trying to get people to register. If you took two thousand people and had them registered, that's five hundred thousand dollars, it's going to come into the town. Because it's two hundred and fifty dollars per dwelling. So in other words, if you have two dwellings. You have to register each one of them, a separate listing. So. And I think Brian, just, I just looked at this very carefully, I, you have a footnote of nine-six. For thirteen hundred and fifty-one. Okay, well, a lot may have happened before September sixth, and now, and that is open until November first. Okay, so there may be, there are going to be new registrations coming in, and I think with this. Very nice gesture on the part of the town toward the platforms that they have to post. The Nantucket registration number on each listing page on their website. I think you're going to see more registrations come.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you think, given that information, and I think it's very interesting. That you're saying that some of this data is not up there yet, they haven't registered, because it sounded like we added about six hundred registries since. Last year Sunday, last year I thought it was seven hundred and now it's fifteen hundred.
Oh, to the regi, there, yeah, I, the data that I got when, I think when the, when this was first announced or whatever for the. For the S T, we, I called the health, the health department, and they told me that that date that I called, like I put in there, was thirteen hundred and fifty-one registered.
No, I know, but I think last year was. It's just started to come online is what you're saying, and I agree with that, but what I want to ask you is.
There was a grace period.
Do you think that that.
Tracking to be higher, I think is what.
Do you think that it would help you if you waited to do your article until you had more data on that alone?
This is not my art.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm just looking at.
I don't mean it that way, I just mean the article that I think that you're.
I just looked at this data, and having. I just looked at this data and having done the projections I've done. I was looking at. You know, how fine constructed. I think it's an excellent job given the amount of time you did, right? And, and I've done the same thing. But I, I just want people to understand. That this is a moving target and some of those projections, and I certainly understand being very conservative. May not result in a kind of draconian suggestions that people are going to have to be fired and all of that. And so, I mean, I think that's a little. Um, premature to make those kinds of suggestions. So that's all I'm trying to suggest. But I think you are going to find. Uh, with twelve hundred and fifty-four Airbnb, that's just Airbnb and VRBO. It is not. We need a vacation. It's not some of these offshore, um. And people rent, what is it? Bacasa and things like that. That, those are not necessarily even included in this. But I'm just suggesting it's a very.
Yeah, you're also making the point that what we're saying is that we don't think that. We can do a strong economic analysis on this article right now.
Well, I'm suggesting it's premature to suggest that it's going to remain be that low. And I'm just, I'm just commenting on.
Okay.
This report. I'm not making any.
Do you think the deficit will be higher?
No, 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 no.
We have more than we think we have.
Okay, do we, uh, we got two people online. I really want to keep going. I'm. Thank you. That was new and interesting and I appreciate it.
The other thing, I mean, I'd like to suggest too is if eighty percent of the rentals are. Owned by people who do not live here, that money is going. All of that metal is going online. I mean, it's a lot of revenue coming in. But it's not state or the banks.
Yeah.
I have to disagree with that.
No, I guess, again, we, we just, it sounds like we don't know. I'm going to get to the next speaker. Thank you. But Mr. Vedoni, you've been waiting a long time. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to first, you know, thank all of you for. The past six years of, uh, this, uh, turmoil and divisive issue, which. I agree with Dave Iverson. My greatest hope is that however this turns out by the voters, we can move on. It's just, uh, too much. Uh, Mr. Hurley, he, Mike is my neighbor. I live out in Quidnet. We also have three acres. Uh, Mike is a, a great neighbor. There's never been any issues between us with who we rent to, who they rent to. We have two dwellings. We never rent them separately. We rent to mainly families, uh, extended families. So. This isn't going to burn my house down either way. It's going to burn Mike's house down, and that bothers me. So what I was going to say is that, listening to, move on from that, listening to, um, the report. One of the numbers that came out was this will possibly take forty-two million dollars out. Of property owners' pockets. Let's just assume it's half right. If it's twenty-two million dollars, and I can tell you for me, my money does not go off island. It goes on island to caretakers, projects, marine hardware. Restaurants, whatever. It does not go off island, and I'm not an investor. In the sense of what you're trying to get rid of. However, if there's twenty-two million dollars taken out of property owners'. Pockets who work and live on Nantucket or are seasonal residents. And the last comment that all the money goes off island is not correct. That twenty-two million dollars has to be made up somewhere. It's not just the town. And I don't think it's going to burn down the town. As it was stated, maybe they'll make it up through other means. Maybe they don't lay off people. The town's not going to burn down. We'll figure it out. But that twenty-two million dollars is coming out of the pockets of working people on Nantucket. Whatever my revenue is reduced as I work on break even, I will make decisions on where the money goes. There'll be less projects, there'll be less landscaping, there'll be less lawn mowing, whatever it takes. Because the town has to work on a, a, a balanced budget. I try and work on a balanced budget. So. Um, my point is, the money's going to have to come out of someone's pocket somewhere. Maybe not forty-two million. Maybe not thirty-two million, but if he's half right, twenty-two million coming out of the economy. So I just hope, as I said, it's not going to burn my house down. What's going to burn my house down is no S T Rs. If the judge rules that S T Rs are illegal, well, that burns my house down. So. I just hope all these things are taken into consideration. And I hope there's some way. That you can treat people like Mike Hurley fairly. They do not deserve to be flushed down the toilet. To try and eliminate what you call corporate investors, the lit, how little of them there are, we don't know. So, please. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vedoni. Kathy, we're. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay. Hi, thank you. Um, just to, you know, just to. Reiterate also what Bob said and as well as Mike Hurley. Um, I think that, you know, there. And I know, Dave, you worked hard on this. I know you didn't want to, um, you know. People will be harmed by it and you know that going in. And this isn't necessarily, um, your full belief in what you would support and not support. You were just working with people to, um, to get something down on paper this, so there's going to be an alternative for voters. Um, another thing, just as a, just to throw out there for people evaluating. Uh, my, my rental model is different than the Hurley's. I have a single home. I don't have the ability to have a hosted stay there. Um, because I, I'm not there year round. And when I'm there, I'm, I'm using the house and so is my family. So what I have always done is do three day rentals, um, because I like to keep it quiet. I like to have shorter pe- times when people are in my home. That's quieter for my neighbors. Uh, they don't bring cars. They, um, are, it's, it makes it an affordable option for people like me. When I came to Nantucket, I, I really was very fortunate to be able to afford a house way, way, way back, back then. But what this article too will force me to do, um, and I need to, to do like Bob and like Mike do. All of the money that comes in from the rentals helps pay for, for example, I had to replace my stove, have to replace my furnace. I have to do a whole bunch of things. And that all stays on the island. But if I have to move to a seven day minimum to make my, my summer. Um, earnings, that's to me not better for the community or better for my neighbors at all. Um, but I'm forced to do that. I would prefer to see, for example, that you could have seven, if you had to make a change, make it seven, seven rentals. Um, and you can only rent once a week. So if I want to rent two days or three days and keep it quieter, I can do that. So that's one suggestion. The other thing that I just wanted to throw out there was, was David, you know. I know that I was at this, the select board meeting where, um, this, this, uh, purview or the select board. Asked Dave as the planning board to try to put together, um, an article for the town. And so I remember that at that meeting, the article that started this conversation was one that was written by Arthur Reed. And it was presented at the meeting and discussed there. And so I thought I would go back just. And look at what that original article had in it, and then what ended up in the article that is now Warren Article Two. And I think, and I, and what I saw surprised me, so I just thought I'd share that. So if you look at the seven components of it, the use chart, um, in the original article from Arthur Reed. Uh, which he wrote for the Act Now organization, had a Y in the use chart. The planning board article now has accessory use. To me, that's more restrictive. So I'm not seeing a compromise yet. Um, the summer season limitations were forty-nine days in the original Arthur Reed article. And they stayed the same way in the planning board article. There was no annual limitation at all in the original Arthur Reed article. But there's a seventy day annual limit in the planning board article. Again, more restrictive. I'm not sure where the compromise is. Changes of occupancy limits. Were in the original article all the way from June fifteenth to September fifteenth. They dropped by two weeks in the planning board article to only go through August thirty-first. On the other hand, uh, the original minimal rental day period in Arthur Reed's article. Was just between July, just in July and August, where the planning board article added two weeks to that limit. So now it's from June fifteenth through August thirty-first. So that's kind of a trade there. And the multiple dwelling limitations, there were different ones. So they were, they were, they, they both had multiple dwelling limitations. Each one will just impact a different group of people, but both of them would in, impact folks like the Hurley's. Um, and that's pretty much, um. That, and also the subleasing, subleasing did not change. So subleasing is not allowed in either article. So when you look at the two of them. I'm trying to figure out how we got a compromise. We're using the word compromise when the planning board article is actually. More restrictive than the one that, um, was, was the starting point for the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, guys, is this about the time to close the public hearing?
Okay, so do I need to make, uh, do I need to go then? We, I don't, we can just close the public hearing and now we can discuss amongst ourselves. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Jill, take a motion. Take a motion to close the public hearing, please.
On your motion, Jeremy. Martin.
Aye.
Joanna, aye. Rob. Anthony.
Aye.
Joe, right?
You're muted, Joe.
Yes. Okay, he's an I, I'm an I. Okay. The public hearing is closed. Oh. Having said that, Dave thinks a lot for all of time. You did a lot. I know, we know you did. I, I, I respect any elected leader who goes out and meets with their constituents. You know that.
Thank you, guys.
I mean it. Okay. Well. So the planning board motion, Article, is that planning board motion on Article Two, do you want to pull that up, Stephen?
Oh, yeah.
And that was to support Article Two. And then they also had a comment.
Yeah.
They actually put in Article Two what the vote was because it was three to two. And, um, they asked to put that in last night. And it should be, yeah, yes. You need to keep going down because their comments will be below, I think, Stephen. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. This article would resolve zoning issues relating to short-term rental litigation that this town and some of its residents have faced the majority of the board. But it also includes appropriate limitations in both zoning and general bylaws. Um, and then do you want to go up and see the motion? I had him on one page at one point. Yeah, so this is just saying it supports the, um, planning board motion. Uh, yeah, the plan board article, excuse me, Article Two. Okay.
How would you like to engage this, Jill? Because.
Well, this is a more straightforward, I mean, they were very straightforward and clear, I think, with their motion that they supported their article. Um, we have historically supported a lot of the planning board articles, I'd say. But we've also had moments where we didn't, um. And so anyway, we, we can do what we want. We can support it. We can not support it. We can. With a comment, we cannot support it with a comment. Like, I just got to hear from all of you about what you want to do.
I will say in my own personal view that clarity is really important. And we have had moments and where we were not as clear. The select board wanted something, the planning board wanted something, we wanted something. And I think that that kind of ambiguity is probably not helpful. And so I think it would, I, I, I'm just leaning towards wanting something clean and clear, whatever that is, but I.
Anthony, are they raising their hands?
Oh, no.
No, the one.
Okay. Well, so discuss, committee, discuss.
So, I mean, I, I feel like, you know, we need to recognize all the work that Dave put into this. And it came from a good place. And I think people are trying to reach a compromise. There are things I like about this article, but there are some things I don't. I like that it's a zoning article. And I, I support some restriction, but I think these restrictions are a little too far. And so I can't support the article as it's written, but, uh, like I said, there's some things about it that I like. So I don't know if the committee would like to have some conversation around, uh, I don't know, I mean, typically when. We typically don't go against the planning board's recommendation. Um, and in the past, when we have had some disagreement, what we've done is take a, um, take no action vote. So we could. We could say take no action. We could say, um, do not support. But if we did either of those things, I would like to have their, like, comment.
But your comment, you're saying you want to praise Dave in the comment?
No, what I'm saying. What, what I'm saying is, is that we recognize that there were parts of the article that were positive and that we could support. But there were other parts of it that we had concerns about. But I think that in our role as a finance committee. The number one thing that we have is the fiscal responsibility. And, you know, Ryan made a very compelling case with regard to the dollars. And regardless, I think of how we feel, the dollar thing, it's almost like the. The tail wagging the dog kind of situation where if we, we would have to have a, a plan of how to deal with the money, and there isn't one.
Right.
Right.
Anthony.
It'd be nice to say if we had more time, it would have been a lot easier.
If we had more time, that, that, that's true. Um. I definitely cannot support. It's, for me, it's, it, because what is the nature of what we are supposed to do as finance committee? And it is to, uh, weigh in on what are the financial implications of these articles that we put forward for the town. Overall, um, and a couple of things. We spent, uh, I think an appropriate but a long time discussing. The zoning, the bylaws, the, you know, how many renters there are, how many houses there are. What I really appreciated was the depth of work in a very short period of time that Brian put forward in his discussion. Regarding, uh, what's really at stake. And I think it goes even beyond that, which what we're all missing in this discussion overall is. What is the broader GDP impact of this for the island? Because it's not just about, um, you know, do we, will we actually gain or lose? Or how do you want to dynamically adjust? Um, some type of modeling, uh, modeling exercise that you can flex with, see if we get this many rooms, that many rooms. Um, we already know, and we heard this in the, in the planning board meeting yesterday. I've heard certainly anecdotal to it and some factual faces of people who are losing their jobs. You know, cer- certain types of businesses that are contracting over and above what they would normally expect to do once the season starts to wind down. Um, restaurants, all that kind of thing has not yet been really fully discussed here. And I think that is actually for me. One of the more onerous topics that would hit this island. Um, if we, if this was supported. So just from, you know, that perspective, me, I, I appreciate the work that Dave put into that. It was nice to hear him talk about how many different people that he has actually engaged in the, in the dialogue, because I wasn't certain that was actually the case. Um, in, in the beginning. But when I hear people like, uh, you know, Mr. Hurley, he. Uh, and not even, and others, you know, Boldoni that's come forward there, some of the discussions they've had. Uh, I have to, it just, it strengthens my belief that we need a lot more information. Uh, to make a decision like that. And let's put it in this current form with the information at hand, um, I did, I, I don't see a way forward with Article Two.
Thank you. Jerry.
I'm not in support of this, however. I think we could put a comment just in here, then we can, I might suggest to be something of. Uh, due to the uncertainty of the financial implications, we need more data and more time. Um, number one. Number two, um, the, the magnitude of. Let's say at the, uh, various aspects of the problem haven't really been identified. Um, we could just make a few comments like that, which basically says, this is great work, but it just doesn't work yet. Keep going. It is. Keep going. It is.
Well. I, I appreciate that. I don't think that's our job. I think our job is just to, to give a motion on this article and personally, and I, but I have a com- well, go ahead, Martin.
You don't think we should make a comment?
No, I'm all for a comment. I just, I, this comment about how we feel is not something I'm personally comfortable with because I, I.
I didn't have the language exactly right.
Well, I have a comment that I'm gonna recommend if you guys want to hear it.
Sure, go for it.
Um, can I, madam?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I, um. Suggest that before you get into drafting comments, that you put a motion on the floor for the finance committee to vote on. And my suggestion would be as follows. The finance committee does not support the planning board motion for favorable action on Article Two. The finance committee further recommends no action on Article Two.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Me too.
So you wanna make a motion, so moved on this. Get a second. Okay. On that motion, Joanna.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Jeremy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Joe. Mr. Wright, you're, you're, you're muted.
Thumb up or thumb down?
He's an I. Do I, yes. Okay. And I'm an I, so that's unanimous.
Um, Libby, the town manager does have a handle, just to let you know.
Okay, she, we, of course, we wanna hear from her.
Somebody please repeat the motion.
Yes.
Yes, um, let me do that, Libby. The finance committee. Does not support. The planning board motion. For favorable action. On Article Two, period. The finance committee further recommends no action on Article Two, period.
I think you mean further recommends take no.
I'm sorry, uh, further, the finance committee further recommends no action on Article Two.
Take no. Yeah.
No action.
Why is he saying no action? And I feel like that sounds like we're saying that we're not. I, I, I don't know, but.
Turn it down.
It's not going forward. It's not saying you don't support action in the future. You're saying you don't support action on Article Two.
Yeah.
Is the way I think that he's indicating it, right, John?
Correct.
Okay, I feel comfortable with that. I thought it's a day start.
So you were gonna, you were gonna mention a potential comment.
If we wanna make a comment, I, I. I did write one last name. My class is so glorious. I just was thinking about it. This is gonna sound pretty official, so you guys can put in your words. The finance committee believes. That the broad restrictions proposed in Article Two lacks sufficient supporting analysis. In particular, no dynamic economic impact assessment has been conducted to evaluate potential effects on local GDP, employment. Housing availability or municipal revenue. Implementing such limitations without rigorous data modeling presents a high degree of economic uncertainty. And risk to the island's overall financial health.
I, I think that's too much.
It's three sentences. I think the first one will be sufficient.
Okay. The first one says the finance committee believes that the broad restrictions proposed in Article Two lack sufficient supporting analysis. I think we wanna combine them actually, maybe to say the, um.
They need to say why.
Right, exactly.
This can add value to people who are. Looking at our input.
Is it?
I think it, no, I, I think this is showing support. I, I'm sorry. I think this is showing respect for Article Two, that it's not, we're, we're saying we just need.
Well, we could take part of this. It's part of the planning board's comment, which is that it would resolve. But it's positive. This, we could use very much the same language they use, which it does though. I mean, that, we recognize in that. It seems to me the, our reservations are based upon two things. They're based on the absence of financial data. And that it's possible with, with amendment, this article will be acceptable.
Correct. Yeah, but we're not gonna say that the articles are acceptable. Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I see. You mean on the floor. Yeah, but.
But one thing.
We can add a legal comment through our endorsing Article One, right? So our view on. Is all an illegal issue.
I would like to add that the comment is not just. On making Brian's model dynamic with better supporting data. But there are other issues in here for which there really isn't any data as what.
Well, that's what I said, local GDP, employment, housing availability or municipal revenue. So it, it's a little broader, but. There are four hundred other things we could put in there.
Could we just say that, uh, we didn't have enough time to have a sufficient review of all relevant financial information?
We can, and that, by the way, other people might be doing that analysis that's gonna come out between now and November.
But today we do not have it.
I know. Okay, so what do we wanna say, Gay?
The finance committee would like to note. That we did not have sufficient financial. Data.
I don't think, I think we had enough financial data to not endorse it, but there's a lot of financial data that's still unknown, right?
I think, to me, it's like, do you wanna say about, do you wanna talk about the impact on GDP? You know, we've heard a lot of people talk about the impact on leases, but do you wanna say the impact on GDP that we don't know?
More to it if we get into this commentary, because there is, there is, uh, the financial model, what's data's available to build that dynamically and correctly. There's an, uh, economic local GDP multiplier of sorts, but that's all in. But then you still have a whole bunch of other issues of its takings of certain people's rights for what purpose? Away from the financial impact. And that purpose is to potentially create more housing for X, Y, and Z rationale. It is to. You know, lower the churn in the island. You know, there are a lot of different issues. I don't wanna.
This is, this is how much the public is interested in our comment.
Yes.
I say no comment. I just wanna throw it out there, but I, but we all have reasons. We, the point is we all have different reasons.
I, I know.
Why we, that's what you're saying, and that's why I don't think we need to come to an agreement on a comment.
I'm with you.
Okay, great.
I'm fine.
No comment. Okay, so to me. I think that we're finished. Does anyone wanna make any comments before we make a motion to it?
Thank you, Joe. And good job on your comment.
That's nice of you. Um, I thank everybody who came and I really thank you, Brian, for doing this. Thank you, Stephen.
And Stephen, thanks for putting together these long lists and I can, one email I can send.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Let me set our hands up.
Libby.
Libby, talking or are you just?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to show you what this looks like.
What?
If the, you're, it. What you've just voted, so you can be sure you can see it in writing?
I, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it was right.
Stephen, can I share my screen?
Yeah.
No, we're not having a comment. So this is a motion? Yeah, this is our motion because.
It says the finance committee does not support. The planning board.
Planning board motion for article.
The finance committee does not support the planning board motion for favorable action on Article Two. The finance committee further recommends no action on Article Two.
That's what John read.
Yeah, that's good.
They're literally like standing at the printer, so I think. On our motion, Jer- Jeremy.
So moved in a second.
Yeah. On our motion, I, Martin.
Aye.
Joanna. Rob. Anthony.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all your time.
Hey, uh, Dave, thank you for spending like eight hours with everyone.